There we go. Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Oliver, for introducing us there. Welcome to tonight's short course. We are recording this at Clark County, so if you do want a copy of that later, do contact the county staff there. This is the short course on local planning. We're really glad you're here. We hope you take away maybe too much information that will be useful and helpful to you in your communities and that you can look back on hopefully as cheat sheets in the future. The short course, we've been presenting it in Washington communities since 1977, so that's pretty impressive. That's even before the Growth Management Act was even adopted. So, everyone, I'm Suzanne Austin. I'm a senior planner with Department of Commerce's Growth Management Services Unit. I'm based out of Spokane. I specialize in the periodic update of the Growth Management Act assisting local counties and cities with their periodic update of their comprehensive plans, zoning and development regulations, and I also provide technical assistance to jurisdictions in southeast Washington. Again, thanks for coming. Moving on to tonight's agenda, we're going to hear about the basic set of land use laws in Washington State, along with a focus on our statewide planning framework, which is the Growth Management Act, I'll refer to as the GMA. We'll have a brief break after the first two segments that Drew Pollam, our attorney, will cover. We'll also do a quick Q and A with him, since he does have to leave after the first half, so do put your questions in chat. Feel free to come off mute if that's a capability here in the WebEx meeting. Ask your questions for him as well. In the agenda that we emailed out, his contact information is also available in there if you need to contact him with questions later on. We'll then have a 10-minute break, let you stretch. We know it's kind of a late meeting, but we appreciate you coming here after work hours to attend this very important training. Catherine McCoy with Commerce will then finish out the second half, going over comprehensive planning basics and planning roles and responsibilities, and then a second Q and A with me and her at the end for the last couple of minutes. So we know it's a lot of information presented in a short period of time, but we hope it provides you with the foundation and context to move forward and learn more. Feel free to introduce yourself in the chat function as well, if you want to tell us where you hail from, what organization you're with, and anything else you want to add in there for the group. So I'd like to introduce our speakers. Our first speaker tonight is Drew Pollam. Drew's an associate with the Ogden Murphy Wallace Municipal Tribe and Environmental Practice Groups. He regularly assists his municipal clients on homelessness, housing, land use appeals, public records requests, public defense contracting, and engaging with tribal governments. He also assists his tribal clients with implementing environmental regulations and enforcement. Before joining Ogden Murphy Wallace, Drew served in-house with the Lumbee Nation, covering everything from foster care dependency matters, revising and developing new ordinances and codes, and federal administrative appeals for education funding. He's a super valuable resource. We hats off to you for all the work you've done for our communities, Drew. Our second speaker is Catherine McCoy. She's a senior planner with the Washington State Department of Commerce Growth Management Services Unit, the same one that I'm here in. She's worked in current planning and land use development for 15 years, specializing in regulatory development permitting and design review. She's served in local government planning agencies in Washington and Montana, including Olympia and Seattle and Bozeman, Montana. She's worked in many aspects of planning, including neighborhood planning, historic preservation, and current planning. Catherine provides technical assistance on the Growth Management Act to jurisdictions in southwest Washington, serves as a Growth Management Services technical specialist on permitting urban design and form-based codes, and is the host of the Southwest Washington Planners Forum. Catherine has a Bachelor's of Science degree in geography with a minor in political science from Montana State University in Bozeman, and a master's degree in urban planning from the University of Washington. Thank you both for agreeing to present tonight at our short course. I'm very glad to have you both here. A little bit of information about the Department of Commerce. Our agency has grown so fast. We continue to grow. It's impressive. We have a portfolio of over 100 programs. We touch every aspect of community, including housing, infrastructure, and economic development. We work with local governments, tribes, businesses, and civic leaders to strengthen communities so all residents may thrive and prosper. Do reach out to us anytime. Feel free to get on our website and explore our programs. We're in your communities. A lot of us do have a hybrid work schedule as far as working from home and being in the offices, so we are spread throughout the state. I want to take a quick moment to thank our partners with the short courses. They organize here with the Department of Commerce so that we can hold these short courses for free, free to everyone, open to all. We want to provide basic information you need about planning law, open government, and best practices around land use planning. These partners are the Planning Association of Washington, which is having its state conference next week in Lake Chelan, if you wanted to check that out, the Washington City's Insurance Authority, Washington Chapter of the American Planning Association, and the AWC Risk Management Services Agency. A quick note, too, the insurance agencies sponsor these courses to provide basic information about planning law, open government, and best practices around land use planning. We all know land use law can be a significant source of risk for local governments. Our insurance agency sponsors want these members to have this training so that they can avoid that risk. The Planning Association sponsored the short course because we're a very efficient vehicle to share information about how we plan in our state. So please reach out to us for more information on them. I will provide some more links in the chat, too, once my portion is done. And some resources as well, which I will also link to. I'll add some links there in the chat function. The Open Public Meetings Act certificate, which you will all be needing if you don't have already. That is available on our short course webpage, and I will link to it here as well, and include my email address if you want to reach out for future short courses, maybe something you missed, maybe a resource you can't access. Please reach out anytime. And just a quick note, too, about some other resources. If you haven't checked in with the Municipal Research and Services Center website, they are a huge resource. I know, you know, having worked as a local planner in the past, huge resource. You don't need to be a planner to really learn something on their website. Again, they're just a huge resource for everything, local government, planning, communities, economic development, the whole bit. So do check out their website for more information, as well as these other links. I mentioned the Planners Forum. The general audience for those are the planners and local governments. We hold them quarterly, and they are available in different regions of the state. We're still doing kind of a hybrid after COVID, whether, you know, it's going to be in person, strictly online, or both. So stay tuned to that webpage, too, if you're interested in our upcoming forums. And does anyone have any questions for me about this introduction before we start? If not, I will go ahead and turn it over to Drew.
Suzanne, before we get started, can I quickly have, I know some folks already introduced themselves by putting that in the chat, but there are some folks who may want to openly introduce themselves before we get started. My name is Oliver Ojiako, and I am the Clark County Planning Director. I have been with the county since I started for almost, I started in December of 89, and I've been with the county since then, and I have also participated and attended several short courses on local planning. And I believe in 2018, I received a certificate of appreciation for, from the Department of Commerce on my, not only being on the panel, but presenting at one of the short courses on local planning. So thank you for coming. Greatly appreciated. I would like some of my staff, but prior to that, I would like, I see, Councilor Bowman here, and I also see the county manager, and I also see our senior deputy prosecuting attorney, Ms. Christine Cook, so she can introduce herself, and then I see Jose Alvarez, and it appears that, I'm not sure if Councilor Marshall is going to join us here. I see a text from her. We'll check on that later, but let me allow our staff, including Jose Alvarez and others, to introduce themselves quickly before we get started. Thank you, you and Kathleen and Drew for hosting us. Greatly appreciate it. So I'll turn it over to anyone that would like to introduce themselves, and I see two planning commission members. Some of them may have already taken the course, but every time you take it, it is always something new to learn. So I appreciate them being here tonight. So let's start with Jack Haroun.
All right, let me turn my camera back on here. Eat some dinner. Yeah, I'm Jack Haroun, a member of the Planning Commission for the county and a former member of the Planning Commission for the city of Vancouver at one point in time. So, yeah, I'm excited to hear what you guys have to say and pick up new insights and information. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Jack. And Mark?
Yes, I'm Mark Burfield, again, a member of the Planning, Clark County Planning Commission. And I did go through the course in March, and so, like Oliver said, there's always something new and, you know, pick it up. So I'm glad to be here. Thank you for doing it again.
Thank you, and let's start with our former chair of the council, Councilor Bowman. Councilor, I'm not sure if you can hear me.
I bet that I am still on mute. So I'm Karen Bowman. I'm a Clark County councillor, and I have been on the council now for three and a half years. So this is my first time going through the whole GMA process and all of this. So it's indeed a very interesting one, on which I find that I'm quite opinionated. So it's all good. And so I appreciate the structure that you bring to it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, and I see the county manager. I'm not sure she put in the chat that she may be out and come back, but if she's on, Kathleen, can you please introduce yourself? I know she already put, did an introduction on the chat, so when she joins us, I can ask her to. So let's go to Ms. Chris Cook.
Well, hello. Most of you know me. I'm Chris Cook. I'm a senior deputy prosecuting attorney, and I've been working with the Planning Commission and with the Planning Department for a few years now. So this will be my second comp plan update, but I also did litigation on a third.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris and Jose.
Yeah, Jose Alvarez with Clark County Community Planning, Land Use Program Manager. Used to be Long Range Planning, so I get those mixed up. But yeah, been here since 1999.
Okay, I think that looks like who we have for now. So Suzanne, go ahead. Oh, is it Drew?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Drew, our first speaker.
And I just want to make sure, because unlike Zoom, where there's not a very fancy red box around it. Can everyone see my screen? Just say, "A short course on local planning."
Yep.
Okay, I'm seeing a lot of nods. That's great. So thank you, everyone. Like Suzanne says, my name is Drew. I work for the law firm of Ogden Murphy Wallace. It's based here in Seattle. Thank you so much for allowing me to present to you all, fine folks down there, down in Clark County tonight. I'm sorry I wasn't able to get there. But as Suzanne says, just got a lot going on. I actually happen to be leaving for Oklahoma tomorrow for my niece's eighth birthday. And so unfortunately, I just didn't have time to come down, meet with all, but thankfully, to technology, I can present all this fine information to you all. And like Suzanne says, we've got two different presentations tonight. The first one's going to be on the legal basis for planning in Washington. Now, let's see. There we go. Some new platform. Got to make sure to know how all the clicking works. So I just want to give us a top line. This is what we're going to be covering today. First, we're talking about the basic planning history and context. The idea of this is explain why we do planning, but also how come we can do planning. Cities have unique police powers that has been developed over time to have the authority to do things like have certain levels of zoning or regulations for development, all of which have culminated into the menagerie of different rules, both on the state level and in the local level, that define how each one of our communities can grow. The next one is going to be about those key planning and land use laws. For a lot of the staff members on here, you know that land use is complicated in Washington. We have a lot of different rules, including the Growth Management Act, the Shoreline Management Act, the Land Use Petition Act, all these different pieces that kind of fit together, that really help dictate how land use development, and really how land use will work for individual people throughout the state. And so understanding what those rules are and what they each do is going to be really important to being successful in making sure you have a solid land use system in place. And then finally, we're going to talk about some constitutional standards and property rights. These are essentially pieces to know that, of course, and I think we all could agree with this, when we pass a land use law, we have to make sure it meets certain constitutional muster, but also make sure that certain actions taken by the government are also meet constitutional muster, and that there's certain rights that need to be respected and protected within the state whenever a land use development project goes forward. And so we're going to just cover those pieces as well. But first, we're going to start off with land use regulations and where they come from and why we do them. They create, land use regulations create attractive, compatible uses. I talked about the idea, and I love this map of the city of Liberty Lake. This is their zoning map for 2021. Then when we try to create uses within a city, it's the idea of a vision of what a city is now today, but also it's looking forward to what a city could look like or a town could look like in the future, and recognizing that each and every one of these communities is going to be different. The map of Liberty Lake, as we see here, is going to look fundamentally different than even the map of, say, Cheney, Washington, just down the road from them. Each and every community has its unique needs, and so land use regulation at the end of the day is supposed to help create compatible uses for the needs of that particular community. And it ensures organized growth and change. You know, when we talk about changes or buildings, we don't want to make, we don't want to make certain decisions that would have a detrimental impact to the community in large. My favorite example is the idea of citing a major factory, a major heavy industrial site, next to residential use. Both uses have their needs, right? You need to have residential zoning for people to live in your community. You need to have some commercial or industrial or agricultural, depending on what your, on your community's needs and makeup for economic activity. But there has to be some sort of rhyme or reason to where these pieces come together. And so what land use regulations do is make sure that when we are, when we're creating, creating, you know, new growth in an area, that it makes sense, that we have residential areas where it makes sense, economic areas where it makes sense. And that leads into safeguarding public health. You think about the answer to the use as a public of land use regulation. You could think about the utilities. The idea of having regulations that require certain growth areas specific to sewer or electric services. It's not uncommon for a lot of communities to have it set up so that certain areas of growth are specific to though, because that service is available, in order to ensure that as the, as the community grows, certain public health remains a top priority. And that goes, Lisa, providing public facilities and infrastructure, not just the idea of, say, sewer, but when we think about like stormwater management, or land, or roads, or frontage, all the kinds of big pieces that come together to make our communities great places for people to want to live and want to work. And again, land use regulations in general help us kind of piece all the, all the pieces together, put all the pieces together to create this, to create this growing and thriving community. The other big thing is that land use regulations, they increase fairness and opportunities. A lot of the laws that we have on the books are about streamlining, efficiency, but also consistency. A great example is the Land Use Petition Act. The Land Use Petition Act was, was, was passed with the express belief that whenever there is a dispute over a land use decision, we should handle land use decisions in a uniform, consistent, and expedited manner. And that, and a lot of our other land use regulations do exactly that as well. But we should go back and we should understand what the basis of modern zoning regulations and land use regulations, where does that come from? How come our cities and towns and counties can do this? Well, it actually goes back not that far. It's almost 100 years old, where, when we have the concept of modern zoning, and the concept of a modern land use regulation or development. And it comes from this case of Village of Euclid versus Amberlity, where the US Supreme Court held that Euclid's zoning ordinances was a valid exercise of the village's police power. Now, I may have mentioned this to you in the very beginning, but states have something called police powers. And by being a subdivision of the state, a city, a county, or a town, you also get a portion of a state's police power. And when I say police power, that is the catch-all phrase that we use that justifies the ability of a town to pass ordinances laws that protects the health, the safety, or promotes the welfare of the community itself. And the holding from this decision essentially says that a zoning ordinance, the say that we're going to have residential here, we're going to have agricultural here, light industrial here, that is a valid exercise of that city or town's authority to protect the health and safety and welfare of the community by organizing how the town or the city or the county will look. And, but there was other things that came out of that decision that were also have an impact on how our zoning regulations and how certain processes are put in place have to be done. So, for example, this is a quote from that exact same case, which says, "While the meaning of constitutional guarantees never varies, the scope of their application must expand or contract to meet the new and different conditions, which are constantly coming within the field of the operation. If the validity of the legislative classification for zoning purposes be fairly debatable, the legislative judgment must be allowed to control." What that means is that, what the Supreme Court is saying is that as long as you can have an open debate about your zoning regulations, the power to create that vests within your legislative body, your county commission, your city council, your town council, and they are allowed to control, meaning that is what's going to be able to move forward for your regulations. Again, recognizing that there's constitutional guarantees, which we'll get to later. But essentially, what they're saying is that because of the changes that might happen, particularly the expansion of a modern community, that the legislature, the legislative body of that committee has the power to dictate how that future is going to look through zoning and through other land use regulations. Now, what's, we've talked about the federal level. Let's talk about the constitutional authority for a county, a city, or town to do planning. Because the Washington State Supreme Court, excuse me, Washington State Constitution also gives, gives you the authority for zoning and land use regulations, specifically found on Article 11, Section 11, which any city or town can establish police power zoning as long as it's not in conflict with general law. Quick, quick note, whenever you say this not in conflict with general law, that means it can't conflict with state law. A great example is, is you could not pass an ordinance that conflicted with the Growth Management Act. What that could mean, here's a really good example. Let's say you're a community that is, that has to provide middle housing. Let's just say you're what we call a tier-three city, so meaning you're a city where you have, where the base density is two units per lot. And you said, "No, I'm not going to, we're not going to let that happen." Our residential zones are going to be single-family zones moving forward, to heck with the, with the Washington State Legislature. Under the Washington State Constitution, because there's a conflict there, you're not allowed to do that. And then we have this quote directly from the Constitution itself. "Any county, city, town, or township may make and enforce within its limits. All such police powers, sanitary, and other regulations are not in conflict with general laws." That also means that not only do you have the right to develop your own land use regulations, you're also able to develop other regulations, like sewer regulations, stormwater regulations, all the other pieces that kind of come together when you're doing, when you're doing land use within a, within a community. And then finally, we have statutory authority, and boy, do we have a lot. These are all the different laws that have some impact to you or to the community that you serve, whether it be how your city or town is classified, the ability to plan. I know that we have a couple of planning commissioners here on the ground. Great. Planning Commission, you have your own code, whether you're, whether you're a code city or cities and towns. We want to build a subdivision. We've got the Safe Subdivision Act. We've got the State Environmental Policy Act. We've got the Shorelines Management Act, Growth Management Act, Local Project Review Act, and LUPA, Land Use Petition Act. All these different pieces play a role in how the land, how a particular project or a particular development is going to be handled within your community. So it's really important for us to kind of go through what each and every piece of these statutes actually is supposed to do. So the first one is the Planning Enabling Statute. What is this? It is exactly what it said. It is, yes, that the purpose and tenet of this chapter is to provide the authority for and the procedures to be followed in guiding and regulating the physical development of a county or region through correlating both public and private projects and coordinating their execution. This is the, this is the statute, along with the Growth Management Act, that really talks about your ability to do zoning, to do comprehensive planning, to really think about both the present state of your community and the future state of your community. The next one is the subdivision statute. Now, what's interesting about it is, is at least I have found is this photo. I think this photo very much is a, is a common photo for a place I grew up. I happened to grow up in the city of Sammamish, which got heavily subdivided back in the 1980s. I grew up in a subdivision. Subdivisions these days, I think, are changing a lot, where we're going to see a lot less single-family subdivision plan units and more into multifamily subdivisions, particularly with the middle housing statute coming into play. But in either situation, this statute would apply. And basically, the statute establishes the process for subdividing land for development, and it details the process for investigating, reviewing, and approving subdivisions, particularly for single-family housing development. But generally speaking, there's two kinds of subdividing under this statute. The first one is called subdivision, or sometimes called long plat. You might have heard that word, long plat. A long plat is when you take a big piece of property. Let's say you've got a 10,000-square-foot property, and you go, "I'm going to make 10 1,000-square-foot lots." That's a long plat. And you're kind of moving into the traditional Levittown kind of suburban subdivision-type plan. That's what a long plat is. But there's also what's called a short subdivision or a short plat. So that's a situation where you might have, again, may have a 10,000-square-foot lot. You go, You go, well, instead of having, you know, ten one thousand square foot lots, I'm going to have four twenty five hundred square foot lots. I'm going to build, you know, X amount of houses on there. That's what's considered a short plat. There's also something called binding site plants. This is an alternative method of land vision. You don't see these very often. It's kind of the situation where the where the over time, the land gets gets slowly but surely subdivided based along a certain plan that a developer might had. Typically, you're going to see a long plat or a short plat most days. You also have planned unit developments. Again, this is kind of a situ PUDs are are usually multifamily or commercial. So they're less of that traditional suburban, single family residence. You may have a situation where you're building, you're subdividing a piece of property, but then you're building multiple condo buildings or whatever you're deciding to do. PUDs, some some communities use them, some people don't, some people have different words for them. But generally speaking, if you have a PUD and you're using that's in, you've got a developer that wants to put together the PUD and they're looking at subdividing a property, they're typically looking at creating kind of more complex multifamily housing. And there's some exceptions, which can be about when certain subdivision happens that that could be. And if you're interested in what those exceptions look like, I have the statue right here. It's RCW fifty eight point one seven point oh four oh. The next one is the State Environmental Policy Act. This is a big one. A lot, if you're a planner, you probably have a lot of experience working with SEPA. And what SEPA ultimately is supposed to do is assist decision makers such as planners, hearing examiners and city councils obtaining complete information about environmental impacts to make well founded decisions about those projects. And it's an extensive procedural statute and applies to both the built in environment and the natural environment. The first step is the initial application. This is sometimes known as the SEPA checklist and it literally is a checklist. And and a developer under the SEPA checklist is supposed to look through, go through its project and make certain declarations about the impact that their project is going to have on the environment. That might be a check on stormwater. That might be an impact on on fish habitat. That might have an impact on native vegetation. That might have an impact on shading. That might have an impact on tribal treaty rights. There's a lot that they have to go through. Um, and so it is at a developer's best interest to provide as much information as they possibly can at step one, because it'll make their lives easier, it'll make your lives easier as you're trying to go through and make sure they've dotted their Ts across their eyes. Once they've gone through the app, once you've gone through the SEPA checklist and you have addressed any sort of air issues, information gaps, anything else that you might need to get information from the developer, you then move to step two. That is the threshold determination. And there are three kinds of threshold determinations under SEPA. The first one is a DNS, a determination of non significance. This is where you issue this, where you go, you sit there, you go, well, the impacts to the environment are minimum, they will be non significant. We can, you can proceed forward with the DN with your project. Then there's something called a mitigated DNS, a mitigated determination non significance. This is the middle ground. And I will tell you now as as a point and something that I've definitely seen in the case law and how the courts handle this. Courts very much like MDNSs because in their view, that is the system working. Because an MDNS gets issued when you as the as the lead agency determine, hey, there might be, there are going to be significant impacts, but we think that they can be mitigated. So in other words, you are going back to the back to the to the project, to the developer. You're saying make some changes to mitigate these impacts. And the courts like that and much more likely to uphold them because it is, they view it as both the lead agency, the county, the city or the town and developer working together to address any environmental issues. The third version is you make a determination that based off of the information, there's going to be significant impact to the point where you require more information. This triggers the environmental impact statement. It's called the EIS. And the EIS is supposed to be a much more invasive, much more thorough and minute thorough review of the program of the particular development. For to give an example of the kinds of developments that would trigger an EIS, again, here in Seattle, I've Climate Pledge Arena triggered an EIS. So when you think about like significant impact, it will typically be tied to the scale of the project itself. In my experience, there's not a whole lot of EISs that get that get issued. They're typically either, I either see MDNSs or DNSs even for say some multifamily, you know, type procedures like high rises for apartments unless it's a huge facility. So typically, that's when I see is when it's a it's a much larger project. When you're doing this review, it should occur concurrently with the general project review. And the reason for that is that it's supposed to make sure that the information, that all information is made available to the decision makers, to your local planning department. So so whenever a the planning department is making a decision on say yay or nay on a project, it should have both the project details in front of it. It should also have the review, the SEPA review and all the information contained with it in front of it. So that when it makes the decision, makes the decision either to either to approve the project or reject the project, it has all the information to make a informed decision. The next, the next one is the Shorelines Management Act. And one moment here, there we go. The purpose is to protect Washington shorelines in the context of development, but take with the recognition that Washington shorelines, any shoreline, whether it be in a lake, a river or on or on the ocean, is a complex ecosystem that needs protection. And the goal of it is to make sure that shorelines remain an attribute and amenity available to all citizens at all times. So the I, the Shoreline Management Act is very much in a place where we want to make sure that that this is not just particularly, this is particularly true if in our communities that are on the shoreline, like think like Bainbridge Island or think Gag Harbor. The idea being that all the shorelines belong to all the people, not just the developer that is potentially making changes to the shoreline. And the regulations that whenever you have an update to your shoreline regulations, you have to ensure that there's no net loss of the shoreline, that whatever development is being created based on the regulations, that the shoreline doesn't change, that the shoreline will remain there, that we're not shrinking or cha shrinking that the shorelines. And that can happen when certain certain projects are accepted or developed over time, like say, uh, there's a, there's a concept called hard armoring. It's also called bulkhead, the idea of putting like a essentially a concrete barrier on the shoreline. Over time, that will erode and change the shoreline. So what will happen a lot of times in a lot of our shoreline communities is hard armoring or bulkhead will be only used in the most specific circumstances. Otherwise, you are running afoul of the Shoreline Management Act to make sure that you're not creating a net loss for the shoreline. The SMA also has a detailed procedural process that may flow either concurrently or non concurrently with the underlying application. I don't know if anyone here has ever dealt with a JARPA application. JARPA applications known as the Joint Acrotic, I forgot what the R is, but project application. And basically, it's a permanent application that that gets sent in on anything you're dealing aquatically and it's hoped hopefully addressing any issues with the Shoreline Management Act. It'll hopefully deal with any issues with the hydraulic code, which is being administered by the WDFW, even allows even gets gets sent off to the Army Corps of Engineers in in the in the event that it will trigger a Clean Water Act review or a Rivers and Harbors Act review, all these different things. So the idea is that the SMA is supposed to flow in again so that all these reviews happen all at the same time. And then local jurisdictions adopt local shoreline master programs, which inventory local shorelines and identify and prioritize shoreline uses. And any SMP must be compliant with state regulations reviewed by the Department of Ecology. And certain types of projects like water dependent uses are given priority. The next, the next law is the Local Project Review Act. This allow, this is a legislative response concerning the burdens and delays resulting from ever increasing number of environmental laws and development requirements. And it establishes significant timelines and required actions. Had, if anyone has seen, sometimes you might see particularly in local regulations that a land use decision must be or shall be, should be issued within a hundred and twenty days. The reason why that language exists is because of the Local Project Review Act. The idea of being, hey, we don't want to sit on these on these applications for projects for months, if not years at a time, with the understanding that certain, again, certain projects are going to be much more complex than than others. And so the the law does allow for you to go over a hundred and twenty days in the event that you need more time to review. Also, the authorizes development agreements and subsequent requirements. A development agreement is sometimes called a build out agreement. The idea being that a developer enters into an agreement with a a developer on a piece of like a huge tract of land to develop it over, say, a twenty year period of time. It's usually much more complex than, say, your traditional subdivision that we were talking about earlier. Then we have the Land Use Petition Act. As I said earlier, establishes uniform expedited appeal procedures and uniform review criteria. And the act appeals judicial view of land use decisions. That includes applications, interpretations of your local code and local jurisdictions enforcement enforcement of land use ordinances with certain exemptions. Typically, what will happen is your planners will make a decision. That decision can get appealed to a administrative body. It could be the county council. It typically is a hearing examiner that that does it, at least in the jurisdictions that I serve with. They make a decision based off of the code. Whatever that decision is, if the applicant is unsatisfied, they can then appeal it again to a court. And at that point, LUPA applies. And it is the exclusive vehicle for appealing land use decisions. And with specific timelines that must be met for appeals to be heard. A prime example is if you needed to appeal a land use decision, you have to do it within twenty one days of the decision being made. Next one is, and I and I know we were talking about it earlier, but the Growth Management Act. This is the requires long range coordinated local land use planning for the environment, economic sustainability, health, safety and quality of life. And it requires cities to adopt comprehensive plans. Who must plan counties with a population greater than fifty thousand people, first class cities, second class cities and code cities, towns with a population less than fifteen hundred people and the federally federally recognized tribes in Washington, of which there are twenty nine. Comprehensive plans and local ordinances and just want to shout out to Suzanne for providing this for me. This is an updated map of where everybody has to do planning over on their comprehensive plans and local ordinance over the next four years. So I know for Clark County, you've got until December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Congratulations. Also in particular, congratulations to any cities within within Clark County that might have to follow the middle housing ordinance. You have until June of twenty twenty six to adopt a to adopt your own middle housing statute. So just something kind of think about how all these different deadlines kind of work together. But as so, but in any comprehensive plan, there are mandatory elements and optional elements to your plans. They have to include natural resources and critical areas. You a lot of our cities and communities have will do an inventory or work with state and federal partners, do an inventory of your natural resources and critical areas to ensure that they're mapped correctly. Provide a planning for urban growth areas and buildable lands, zoning and development regulations. And just another note, again, a lot of the changes that will occur that will happen for land use regulations will typically also happen within the Growth Management Act. I keep coming back to it because I think it's just so timely. The middle housing statute rests within the Growth Management Act and it's considered a mandatory element of both your comprehensive planning and your local ordinances. So that's kind of the big picture. These are all the different rules of the road and laws and powers that the city or a county or town has to both zone, plan and then develop, develop their communities. But that's not just part of the, that's only part of this of the equation. The other equation that all of us have to be mindful of are constitutional issues. The things that that our governments have to do whenever making a decision in order to ensure that the that the decision it passed constitutional muster. And the first thing issue I want to talk about is something called procedural due process. And this comes from the Fifth Amendment of the United States Constitution. No person shall be deprived of life, liberty or property without due process of law. And the way this is also is in the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution. Nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty or property without due process of law. How this plays into your land use regulations, it's about how you, it's about how you adopt them. You have to give notice of new zoning, of new regulations, new ordinances that could be done through the planning commission process, be done by some other version. And the opportunity to be heard, the opportunity to get public comment. In other words, you have to have the community have an opportunity to take part in the process, in the land use regulatory process. Whether the, again, that is zoning, whether that is developing your own land use regulations or your own comprehensive plan. As long as you could, as long as you meet that, you will have satisfied procedural due process. The next issue is substantive due process. And this focuses primarily on the implementation of a zoning regulation. Whenever you have a zoning regulation, the regulation that you put into place cannot be arbitrary, cannot be irrational and cannot be unsupported by circumstance or governmental interests. Meaning that when you put in a regulation, you can't do it just because you want to do it. You have to have a reason for it. I will use the example I used earlier. Let's just say you have somebody who wanted to build a factory right next to a residential area. And the and the county council decided, that's not a great idea. We're going to take this piece of property this guy's got, where he was going to build this, build this factory on and we're going to rezone it for residential use so it matches the rest of the use. When you do something like that, you have to have a good rationale for doing it. It could be the fact that that the piece of property is is more consistent or similar to the other properties and zoning in in the nearby residential zoning. And so residential use is the best use of the land. It could be a health and safety issue. We can't have heavy industrial use right next next to a residential, next to a residential zone. Whatever it is, it has to have some sort of rational basis to it. And it has to, it has to fulfill a governmental interest, like protecting health and safety or like ensuring a orderly, organized growth of your local community. The next issue is constitution is takings. This space, oh, excuse me. On the Fifth, on the Constitution, the Fifth Amendment, specifically eminent domain. You also have the Washington Constitutional, Washington Constitution, Article One, Section Three, which also talks about personal rights. And then Section sixteen, which specifically talks about eminent domain. Eminent domain simply says that you cannot take a person's property without paying fair market value. There's another issue I want to bring to your to your attention. That's the idea of regulatory taking. This happens way more often than eminent domain, I think, for our communities. And the idea is this, as a constitutional issue, a city, a county, a town could take an action that is considered a taking through what's called inverse condemnation. In other words, by excessive regulation. And what that, and that really is divided into two versions, per se regulatory taking and partial regulatory taking. The first one, per se regulatory taking is when a regulation is so onerous that its mere existence creates for the landowner a physical appropriation of their property. And it has, it happens in one of two ways. One, because of how the regulation works, the property is actually physically invaded, like say, the government is putting something on the property that they're not, that the otherwise, the property owner otherwise doesn't want or deprives a landowner all economic benefit of the property. How could that look? Regulate a regulation that would make it to ensure that no matter what happens on the property, no development could happen on the property. That's kind of a per se regulatory taking. There's also a partial regulatory taking. That's all other takings that are. That's all other takings that are basically based on a case-by-case basis and a multiple factor test. Comes from a Supreme Court case called Penn Central. And basically, in order to see if there's a partial regulatory taking, meaning, hey, part of the land I can't use. You have to figure out the, the economic impact on the landowner, the extent that the regulation impacts the landowner's economic expectations and the character of the government action itself. Next, we want to talk about vested rights. Washington stands out as a unique state. We follow what's described as the minority rule. And what we mean by that is that when a land use application comes in under the proper conditions, once an application is complete, at the time of submission, whatever is on the books for the regulations at the time apply to that application. The reason why that is the minority rule is that the majority rule is that once a land use application has been approved, all the, all the laws that, that were in place at the time would apply. That's the majority rule. For us, if I was a developer, I submitted a building permit to build something in Vancouver, which is, say, was a multifamily home. Once my application was deemed complete by the planners, any land use laws that were in place will apply to that, to that particular project, even if the next day after it was approved, after I got my application was deemed complete, the Vancouver City Council completely changed every single land use law that would have applied to my project. And here are the different kinds of applications that vest. This is very important, and it's all statutory-driven. The building permit application, so like what, what I just gave. Short subdivision and subdivision applications, development agreements, non-conforming uses in limited circumstances. And it will vest, there will also be vest to any other zoning and other local land use controls. These, these applications specifically. And it must have a restraining or direct influence on the use of the land regardless of whether adopted pursuant to state directive or local discretion. In other words, the land use regulation, in order to be vested against that regulation, has to have some sort of impact on the development itself. And as a result, zoning and the following zoning and land use controls do not vest. Stormwater regulations required under the MPDES permit, impact fees, and connection fees. Finally, I want to talk about moratoriums. The authority for a town, city, or county to issue a moratorium is from RCW three six point seventy-eight point three nine zero and RCW thirty-five A point six three point two two zero, which permits the local jurisdictions to adopt a temporary pause to allow the local jurisdiction time to review and analyze the impacts of new land use development and regulation. And for example, no development in a new, in a critical area, like, say, a wetland, when new, while new regulations are being considered. So finally, I just want to draw together some final conclusions, and thank you so much for this first part of my presentation. But the number one thing I want you to take away with is that these sorts of laws, rules, they're constantly changing. Whether they be within our local community, because we've got new development regulations change all the time, or whether it be new state requirements. Land use is always changing. It's always important to understand what is, what is happening and how it's going to have an impact in your community. And the concepts are not black and white. What might be a completely rational decision for one kind of zoning might be completely totally irrational for another. So just because you say, well, we're going to do residential zoning here and here for this, for Area A, does not necessarily mean that it would, that you can do it for Area B. It's also important to review the statutory framework and work with your attorneys to understand the case law and work to ensure regulations are reasonable and clear. And that's to make your lives easier and to make applicants' lives easier and the public's lives easier. I think a lot of times what, what gets a lot of places in trouble is we're trying to deal with too many things at once. Clear regulations that deal with, with clear concepts will make everyone's lives easier because it'll make all, everyone will have a consistent understanding and expectation for each and every project that comes through. And also, you've got to make sure you safeguard the public notice and input process. The public, we're here as all as public servants. And my guess, and the public has a right to be, take part in these conversations. And it is part of the law, particularly if you're making any changes to your comprehensive plan or development regulations, that the public has the ability to comment on those changes. And whenever you're in doubt, please ask your local jurisdiction's counsel. It is much better to add, to get legal advice before you make a decision than it is to deal with the fallout if, if, if an issue arises. So like I said, this is my first presentation. Suzanne, do we want to allow people to ask questions specifically on local land use before I switch over to open government?
Thanks, Drew. I don't see any questions in, in chat. If we want to go ahead and do the OPMA part, and then we'll move into a break after that, as well as Q and A with Drew. I just want to make sure everyone's getting out on time tonight. No questions in chat. Go ahead and take it away, Drew.
All right. Can everyone still see my screen? We good?
Yes.
All right, we're going to delve right into open government training. Or, as I like to call it, open, the Sunshine Laws, the Open Public Meetings Act and the Public Records Act. So that's exactly what we're going to talk about. We're going to talk about the ins and outs of the OPMA and the ins and, ins and outs of PRA. Everybody here, based on what, what I understand from everyone's background and what they do, is subject to both the OPMA and the Public Records Act. And so it's really important to understand what that actually means and how the impact, whether it be how it impacts your meetings or your communications, any things like that throughout the entire, throughout the process, particularly process when you are addressing any kind of development. So let's talk about OPMA. First, I want to talk about the fact that we're even talking about this, and that is the, because of the Open Government Trainings Act. Back in twenty twelve, the Auditor's Office reported more than two hundred and fifty open government-related issues among local governments. And in recent years, courts have imposed significant monetary penalties against public agencies due to non-compliance with the PRA. So the Attorney General advised that PRA training and OPMA training is the best practice so that both public officials, appointed officials and, and staff understand their obligations under both. And so back in twenty fourteen, the legislature passed Bill five nine six four, which was designed to foster open government and reduce liability by educating officials and staff on open government requirements. And that's why we're having it today. For, and this is just a slide to kind of talk about what that actually means. I don't know if for those folks, this is your refresher. Congratulations. You've, you've now, you will now have done your, your one refresh you'll have to do every four years. But if you are certain local state officials, public records officials, you need to be part of this training. Or at least get this training at least once every four years. So let's start off with the OPMA. The OP, the OPMA's declaration is that the people and delegating authority do not give public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. In other words, they have the right to hear how decisions are being made. And that's a key rule. All meetings are declared open and public except for executive sessions. All meetings of the governing bodies shall be open and public to the public gavel to gavel. All persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting of the governing body, except as otherwise provided by law. And the purpose is to allow the public to view the decision-making process. Who does it apply to? Public agencies, including school boards. It applies to sub-agencies. And it applies to govern, governing bodies, whether that be a multi-meter board, commission, committee, council, or other policy or rule-making body of a public agency, or any committee thereof, when the committee acts on behalf of the governing body, conducts hearings, takes testimony, or public comment. That includes both county commissions and planning commissions. But before we go too far, that we should understand what we mean by meetings. So this is the definition of what a meeting is under the OPMA. All meetings under state statute are considered regular meetings if codified at a regular date, place, and time. So think about, and I don't know how often the Clark County Commission meets, but whatever that regular meeting frequency is, those are all considered regular meetings. All considered meetings covered by, under the OPMA. Any other meeting is considered a special meeting. Meetings are considered to occur when a quorum of the membership takes action. But what the heck, what the heck is action? Action means the transaction official business includes public testimony, all deliberations, discussions, considerations, reviews, and evaluations. And it does not matter if you're taking an action, meaning you're in the process of discussing something, or you are taking final action, like, say, voting on a development regulation. If you are having a meeting to discuss the development regulation before you're actually voting on it, that has to be done out in the open. And there are all different kinds of meetings that, 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 that apply to the OPMA. We talked about regular business meetings, we just talked about that. Study sessions, workshops, retreats, those are also considered types of meetings that are open to the public under the OPMA. Special meetings, so when you have to set a meeting because of an emergency, that's considered a meeting. Executive sessions are also considered a meeting. Although it's a meeting that does not involve having the public there because it's the lone version. Executive sessions are the lone exception to having the public always there. And that allows you to, to get to address more sensitive issues, like, say, speaking to legal counsel. Attendance at other meetings, attendance at social events and serial meetings are all considered meetings under the OPMA. Let's say you are a planning commissioner and you go, go to somebody's house for their birthday. And, and it just so happens that there are other commissioners there. And you all wanted to decide to talk about a, a development regulation that is being proposed. And so you guys have a conversation about how you feel about, about that regulation. You have now engaged in a meeting that is technically supposed to be covered under the OPMA and would require the public to be able to participate in. Which also means that by having that conversation, you're potentially in violation of the OPMA. But let's kind of drill this down a little bit more. A regular meeting, we've already talked about this, occurs within a periodic schedule declared by statute and rule. If you're a state public agency, there's specific rules you have, you have to follow, such as publishing a scheduled regular meeting so people know what's going on. And a special meeting is any meeting that's not a regular meeting that's called by the presiding officer or the majority of the members. Let's talk about serial meetings, because this is a big one. Serial meetings or rolling meetings occur when a quorum of council members take action on city business, and this can be covered by the OPMA. This can happen with emails, text messages, phone calls, or in-person meetings. I don't know about you, I don't go anywhere without this. And I probably have four or five different conversations going on at any given time on my phone or on my email. You know, it's just part of our modern world to be, always be connected at all times. The care that you have to have if you are somebody who's covered under the OPMA is, is ensuring that, that you don't have the conversation you need to have out in the open on text message or on a phone call or in a text thread. And a quorum of members does not need to be on the same email chain or a phone call to be inappropriate, as long as there are successive discussions. So in other words, if I was somebody who, who needed, let's just say, all the rest of you just looking here, I see Suzanne, Christine, Catherine, and Jack. Let's say you're all members of a planning commission, and I'm also a member of the planning commission. If I call Christine to talk about a development regulation that's before us as a commission, and I get off that phone, and I have, and I get on the phone with Suzanne, and I'm having that exact same conversation we're having, and maybe I'm bringing in more of a discussion that I'm having from Christine, that is considered a serial meeting. So even though Christine is not on the phone call with me and Suzanne, we are having a rolling-on discussion. And that is considered a violation of the OPMA. The only way it's permissible is if one member emails the other members for the purpose of providing relevant information. So for example, at my firm, what my members like to do if they need to provide information to all of, all of the council members on, for a particular client, is they may have a, a line in front that says, please do not reply all to, to not violate the OPMA or some, some headline. Here is some information about some project or some issue that, that is of concern to you for, for your, for your information for your next meeting. So in other words, you can receive information of, in, through these forms. You just can't participate and have a conversation about that information if it conduct, if it's about city, city business outside of that. I put this in as an example. A couple of years ago, Seattle City Council voted to adopt the head tax. And then one month later, with no conversation on, on the record, they, the city council voted to repeal the head tax. And it became very clear that what happened was is that the two deputy mayors of the city of Seattle were having phone calls and text messages with each of the individual council members and were essentially lobbying and having the conversation behind doors to repeal the head tax over that month. And there were two lawsuits that were filed. And if the lawsuits had prevailed and had moved on, that whole decision, the June twenty, twenty eighteen decision could have been voided, meaning that the head tax would have gone right back onto the books. That didn't, that's not what happened. The lawsuits were settled for money, as you can see, for three five hundred and thirty-five thousand apiece. But that's the kind of, when we, part of the reason why I emphasize serial meetings so much is because of the, of the example of the Seattle City Council in this specific case, and how easy it was to have the conversation with, with your colleagues over, uh, over text message and phone calls. Now, there are also been some couple of updates. These updates are, are a couple of years old now. They were kind of done as part of COVID. First off, all meetings of a governing body of a public agency can, can be held in a physical, have to be held in a physical location with, where the public can attend, with two exceptions, one of which being an emergency. That was written directly in as a response to COVID, so that if there was a public health emergency that, where it was, in, where at some, for whatever reason, like COVID, it was not prudent for people to come and gather in one particular place, you could hold the meeting in an entirely remote location. It also allowed both members of the public and members of governing body to attend by remote attendance, to encourage remote attendance and remote attendance opportunities. And then finally, public comment. Anytime there's a final action being taken, you have to allow the public an opportunity to comment on the item before the action is taken. So for example, if you're on the county commission, you're about to make a change, you're about to adopt your comprehensive plan, even if you've had comment throughout the process, as you should be doing, you have to allow public comment at that meeting before you can take final action on adopting your comprehensive plan. And then OPMA, the public comment, public meetings for, versus public hearings. Public comment can only be taken at or before regular meetings where final action is taken or otherwise is required by state law. Public comments taken before a significant decision is made in order provide due process or when a specific statute or regulation requires one. Remember what I said in my first, my first, uh, presentation about procedural due process? You have to allow, have to give the public notice and allow them to participate, to comment on changes to your development regulations or comprehensive planning, all your different documents. Public comments can be done orally or written comments before, at, before the meeting, and it's one-way communication. I am assuming that if you're on the planning commission or on the county commission, the reason why you did it is because you cared about your community. You wanted to participate in your community. You want, you want to make sure that you feel your community is being heard. If, and so sometimes what happens is, is that planning commissioners or elected officials, they use public comment as an opportunity to also engage with, with, with the community, while that is certainly a a worthwhile endeavor, and I would encourage you to be always having, engaging with community members, just not during public comment. It's a one-way street. They're there to give comments to you on your decision. If you want to have a conversation with that individual, it has to be, it should be done outside of the public comment period during a public meeting. So that's OPMA. So we're now going to switch gears to the Public Records Act, which is a strongly worded mandate for broad disclosure of public records. It requires all agencies to disclose public records unless an exemption applies. It requires all agencies to disclose public records unless an exemption applies. It imposes fines for non-compliance and it requires strict compliance, so you don't, we don't have Watergate happening over and over and over again. Again, it's a sunshine law. It's the, the idea of it is that the public has the right to know how certain decisions are being made, whether that is open in an open meeting under the the Open Public Meetings Act or in emails or documents through the Public Records Act. Here are the general requirements of a public records act, you have to require full access to public records. You got to protect records from damage to disorganization. You got to provide your fullest assistance to requesters and you got to provide timely responses to requests. Who has to provide it? And an agency has to provide it. And an agency is defined as all state agencies and all local and all local agencies and their employees and appointed officials in Washington. Meaning if you're a public entity in Washington, you're an agency that has to provide public records. And a public record is any writing containing information relating to the conduct of government or the performance of any government governmental proprietary function prepared, owned, used or retained by any state or local agency regardless of physical form or characteristics. This becomes a particular issue if if you're a situation where you're conducting city business on personal devices. Personal emails, personal Facebook page pages. If you are considered an agency or an employee and you're talking about city business that are and are creating conduct about the performance, excuse me, information relating to the conduct or performance of a government agency. You are, you, that particular record will fall under the Public Records Act. Now, the request itself requires no, there's no statutory required format for how somebody submits a public records request. It can be mail, made by email, fax, or it can be verbal. If it's done verbally, the person receiving the request, you reduce it to a writing and then confirm it, the request with a requestor. You can always ask for clarification under the PRA whenever and a requestor is either is not being clear on what the kind of records they're looking for or the, or if the records or whatever the request is, is extremely complicated. Um and you also can have a request form, you can, you 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 don't have, you can't require them to have the form completed. Uh and you can encourage to make forms available on websites. And there, you can make a difference between having inspection of records and, excuse me for one minute, or have providing copies of records. But the next thing though is that they have to provide identifiable records. So in other words, you cannot send any requests for all or substantially all records prepared or owned, used or retained by an agency. And the record provider that a request for all records regarding a particular topic or containing a particular keyword or name shall not be considered a request for all the agency records. So in other words, I can't go to Clark County and go, I want all Clark County's records for all land use decisions ever made. I can go to Clark County, go, I would like all records pertaining to a land use decision for the property at one, two, three Main Street, Vancouver, Washington. That's the difference between an identifiable record and not an identifiable record. Searching and providing records, so anytime you get a records request, an agency must conduct an adequate search concerning all forms, all locations, all possible search terms, and all possible forms of records. And has to provide search criteria, has to account for time taken to produce records and area searches must all be documented. So one of the things I often counsel my own clients is the idea of using installments of reaching back out to the requestor saying, based off of your requests, I am going to be doing a search based off of these search terms so that the person understands, the requestor understands fully, this is how much time it's going to take to fill the request and these are the documents that that the agency is going to look for. By also reaching out to a requestor that way, you also give them the opportunity for them to either clarify or to narrow or to provide feedback on the search terms that you're using in order to find these records. Searches on private, private devices and accounts, so if you're a, say, a planning commissioner, you might be asked to provide a search for any public records on your home computers, not agency emails, social media, cell phones and metadata. I'm not sure how Clark County works, but if if you are a planning commissioner, I I again, not to pick on planning commissioners, it could be any commissioner. And you are given a county issued device, use it. Don't, if you, always avoid, if you can, using non-agency email, non-agency devices. Because it's just going to make your life easier when you have to deal with a public records request when the public records officer is asking you to do a search. You can say, ah, nope, nothing's on my home computer because I don't use my home computer for for any, any business related to me as a county commissioner or as a planning commissioner. Nope, here's, I don't use my social media either. Just recognize that that the PRA can can enter into these areas of your personal life, into your private life and to find whatever accommodation you can, that you need to do in order to, in order to make sure that it doesn't go too far into your life. Here's a couple of examples of how that actually operates. Public records impersonal residences on personal computers and personal email accounts must be disclosed. That's from the case West versus Vermillion and Pualup. And then we have a separate case also involving West and Pualup. Facebook posts on an official's personal site are public records. Again, anything related to the conduct of government and are prepared, prepared within the scope of employment or official capacity can be disclosed under the Public Records Act. When you are an employee and you're being asked to search for certain public records to fulfill a public records request, the public employee must obtain, segregate and produce to the employer those public records that are responsive to PRA requests from the employee's personal accounts, files and devices. Employees may be required to submit an affidavit certifying their search, this is sometimes called a NISEN N I S S E N affidavit. Nissen affidavits come from the, from the Nissen case, just a short term for it. Essentially is a document that has you certified, you conducted a specific search. You found these specific, you found certain specific records which will then be attached to the affidavit or you found no records. So let's say you now have all these different records put together, you've done your search. Some records may be exempt from disclosure. Not all records or parts of records are disclosable depending on the information contained in the record and if legal exemption applies. Key note, legal exemptions are are narrowly construed. And anytime something is exempted, like say redacted or withhold, an exemption log must be prepared and given to the requestor noting legal reasons uh reasons why it's being redacted and a part of the record that was redacted. Here's another key point, there is no general privacy exemption in the PRA. Privacy is only considered invaded if it's one, highly offensive to the to the reasonable person and two, not of legitimate public concern. A prime example of that is if somebody was asking for the performance evaluations of certain staff members like planning directors or planning managers. That will, unless there's some sort of misconduct contained within those evaluations, that's considered to to meet the privacy exemption standards under the PRA. It's also your duty to preserve records. Under RCW forty point one six point oh one oh, it is unlawful to remove, alter, mutilate, destroy, conceal, conceal or obliterate a record, and if you do so with the with the intent to destroy, you can be guilt, found guilty of a class C felony. Don't worry if you destroy a record inadvertently, you're not going to jail, this is only covering willful intent to destroy. I would also tell you all that there is, that the Attorney General's Office also, excuse me, not the Attorney General's Office, the Washington Secretary of State's office provides a a records retention schedule. If you're somebody who has to be um tasked with preserving records, understanding what what needs to be retained and the time limits that has to be retained will all be addressed by the Washington, by by that records retention schedule. Which means that you don't have to hold on to the record until the end of time. Eventually you'll be able to dispose of it after a certain set period of time. It might be six months, it might be three years, it might be twenty years, but eventually you'll be able to destroy it. Now, let's assume for a moment that there is a PRA violation. Well, under RCW forty two point five six point five five zero, there can be judicial review of agencies' actions. If the requestor prevails and and in saying that there has been some sort of document that's been withheld, uh they're going to have, be awarded attorney's fees. And it's up to the discretion of the court to award a person, and it really is a person, a, a, the money goes to them. An amount not to exceed one hundred dollars each day that he or she was denied the right to inspect or copy said public record. And the penalties can get very large, this is kind of a list of the last ten, ten years of different kind of settlements or cases where PR, where you have PRA violations and the kind of um fines and and fees that can be levied against uh local governments. Anywhere between forty five thousand from the Port of Vancouver, all the way up to six hundred thousand from St. Helmut County. I just talked about this, but records retentions, you have governing laws, they're under our RCW forty point one zero, forty point one four, forty point one six and forty point two zero. Again, the Washington Secretary of State also maintains a retention schedule that's based off of these RCWs. If you have any questions of how, how and for what kinds of documents you have to retain and for how long, you should go to that website, to the Washington Secretary of State's website and look through the retention schedule. Again, this is what they, exactly what they do is through the local records committee within the Secretary of State that that actually puts it together. And once it's been destroyed, and once the timeframe has been met for how long you keep the record, the agency can destroy or transfer it to the Washington State Archives, again, based off of the retention schedule. So I want to leave with a few practice tips. If you have any questions about your, how how your community deals with PRA, you should review your adopted Public Records Act policy. Avoid putting things in writing unless necessary and required, particularly on your own conducting business on your own required, on your own um devices. I also like to say, I have, there's kind of a related legal rule to this kind of legal maxim, which is uh when you put things in email, uh write emails as if one day it will be read in a deposition. Uh when you ever put anything in writing like an email or a document, write it as if one day it will be released to the, released to the public through a Public Records Act request. And how you, and think about how, how you want that to be reflected on you. Report any request for records to the public records officer. For example, if you're a county commissioner and you get a, you get an email from a constituent and the constituent's like, I want records for X, Y and Z. Even though they haven't done, gone through the, through whatever process been adopted by the county, that is still a request for records. So anytime you get something like that, it's forward on to the public records officer so that they can address it and 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 address the uh requests per your policy. Organize your records in a logical manner and be, make sure it's accessible to others. Avoid text, instant messaging, et cetera, when you're talking about city business. Again, this is about making your life easier and the life, your public records officer easier. Because for example, if you're texting about city business, what you're probably going to have to go through, for example, if you have an iPhone, is go through and screenshot the texts that that deal with that particular subject and that, and that is never fun to do. And avoid using personal devices and accounts. Don't be afraid to phone a friend. So kind of the same viewpoint at the end of the, our, our uh legal basis for planning. Whenever you have a question, talk to your legal counsel, that's why they're there. Make sure, it's always better to ask if you've got issues so that it can be addressed versus having to go back and fix a problem. If you have any more questions on the PRA, you can always review the Public Records Act, which is at chapter forty two point five six. The Municipal Resource and Services Center, which I know Suzanne talked about earlier, MRSC is amazing, love MRSC. Always have great resources there. The Washington State Attorney General's Office also provides an open government manual that will cover a lot of the things we talked about here today, both for the PRA and the OPMA. And finally, the Washington State Attorney General's Office provides something called the Sunshine Committee List. The Sunshine Committee actually puts together and denotes all the different exemptions that may apply. And so they have a lot of really good resources, both on the OPMA and the PRA. Alright, do we have any questions?
That was great Drew, thank you so much. I do have a question in chat here from Jack. During public comment, how do you receive additional information?
What do you mean by additional information?
So, well, the easiest way is to use an example, um uh we had uh our fire commissioners testify for us because they want fire impact fees enacted. And um we had a lot of technical questions that um staff um just didn't have the information. And so we had basically the quote-unquote the experts in the room, multiple fire chiefs that had taken point on several things. And so they all had their three minutes to testify, but our relevant questions um were asked really of kind of the called the, the, the experts in the room, which were the people testifying um for public comment. How is that, how do we get the information? Because typically what we have is a workshop and there's no public comment. We'll ask some questions and and then they publish the final voting documents the same day as the workshop. Because we have the hearing fifteen days later. So there's no time to actually change any documents or have any input from anything from the, the public would never change the documents that had been published because it's already been published. And then, um so then all of our questions come up, if staff doesn't have any of the answers or they didn't get to them or they didn't know the answers, um sometimes that, that information that we need is gleaned from, like in this case, it was the public testimony of the fire chiefs. So what is the, so are we not allowed, like it's, we're, we're not allowed to actually ask them kind of their expert opinion on something while we're making a ruling that's affecting the community or recommendation, not a ruling, but.
So so to make sure I understand it correctly, when the fire chiefs were were there, they were giving public comment, there was a, there was a rigid public comment section, they're giving public comment to you, the commissioners and and their, but their comments were based off of their um their expertise as fire chiefs, my understanding of that right?
They, well, they were, they were, in in this role, um they would be community members advocating for a position which that we would pass a recommendation for um for impact fees. And so what, what we were seeking for as a, as commissioners was additional information. Um say that we just weren't getting from um this, you know, the totality from the staff report. Um and so so it was, it was very much like they would testify and then we actually like, and it's, this is all under the public comment period. Um that we were asking them additional questions for clarification and we even had some people come back up and then um clarify because they, they held the information that we've, we believed we needed to make a good recommendation to counsel. Um but, but otherwise there would be no way, because um at that time, we were, we were, um council had directed us that we can't continue meetings for additional information, that you can only vote up, down, you know, or um make an amendment. But you couldn't continue a meeting for additional information, so um so yeah, so how, how does that interaction, so is that a violation of, of the process?
It's, it's less of a violation, the issue that you run into that when you are interacting with the public comments is is that is that somewhere down the line, whenever you make a decision, that decision is going to be based off of record and that's going to include the public comment period. If I was, if I was in the room, my, my, you know, and I think hindsight is twenty twenty and I think you're in a unique situation with that where, where the public commenters are really also your subject matter experts, which I think is a little very different than I think a lot of the other ways that you're doing study sessions or are other ways that how that information's coming in. But going back to the staff going, hey, based off of that public comment, I, we, we need answers to these certain kinds of questions. And maybe having setting up a study session for 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 another hearing or for another day might have been more, might have been more appropriate. I'm not saying that you did an OPMA violation that day. I'm just saying that it is, it's important for, for, for the process and how the record reads that when you are taking public comment, you Then when you are taking public comment, you avoid when possible, the one-way communication. Because it's, in theory, the public is supposed to be giving their feedback to you. It's not supposed to be back and forth. But again, I, I feel like that situation, because you're dealing with your subject matter experts, that may be one of the situations where I might have gone, this is fine, because you're, you, those really are your subject matter experts, and you really are, it's a, it's a little different than say, a, a, you know, a non-subject matter, just your ordinary citizen who's coming in, who's trying to have their voice heard in the process, that, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it totally, it totally makes sense and it didn't, I said that it didn't feel wrong because it was um, um, they, they did hold the information that we needed.
Right.
Um, and um, and it would be, it was, and it was so much, you couldn't expect staff to hold, you know, their expertise, I mean, they're fire chiefs, right?
Right.
So, you know, it's, it's unfair to, you know, ask Jose or somebody, hey, what does this mean? And then the people in the back room could raise their hand and go, well.
This is what it actually means.
This is actually what it means, right? So um, yeah, so and I just didn't know if there's, if there's a mechanism in there that you can, I don't know, maybe there's a way to split the meeting and then pull them up, but yeah, I do want to stand back and forth with the public.
Well, and in reality, you know, and, and particularly if you're like in a commission state, like you're really relying on your staff. And, and my would hope would be is that the staff has also had the conversation with the subject matter experts in order to be able to answer those questions for you. So you're not necessarily, for lack of a better word, like sourcing from the crowd, right?
Right.
But it's, again, it sounds like that was a very unique set of circumstances that you were running into and for that particular meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Next question, uh.
Let's see, it looks like we have a question from Sue Marshall. How is, in quotes, deemed complete, end quote, defined related to an application for purposes of determining vesting?
So that is when an application has, when all the portions of the application have been filled out as it has been, and is typically a mark that has made, been, uh, not a mark. That's a determination that's made by the planning department. So if, if a planning, uh, if a planner, planning manager can review an application and based off of the development regulations of what needs to be in the application, if all those, those elements are within the application, which is say, there's five elements in a building permit application, I'm just throwing that out there. And all five billing, five sections of that billing permit application have been completed, that is when a planner can say, all right, your application is complete, we can now begin processing. And typically that, most places will, will actually send out a letter deeming the application complete or deeming it incomplete and asking for additional information. And that's typical, and in situations like that, if there's ever a controversy down the line, that is usually the, uh, the document that a court will look to go, all right, it was completed on this day. So the, the person has a vest, is vested to, to the land use regulations of, by this date.
So I, I would like to interject if I could, this is Chris Cook, Senior Deputy Prosecuting Attorney. Vesting is a little different in Clark County. The counties may, under state law, um, have some of their own regulations concerning vesting. Uh, Counselor Marshall, you will find Clark County's vesting provisions at Clark County Code Title 40 in Chapter 500. So you will find the vesting provisions for applications for each kind of development project in those provisions of the code. The sorts of applications that come to county council for legislative matters, on the other hand, those don't vest. You, you're not, you don't, you're not entitled to a zone change of your property.
Correct.
Um, nor are you entitled to the particular uh provisions of, of county code at any particular time with regard to um, those applications. So uh, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you for that, uh, because it, I, it wasn't quite jiving what, what our presenter was presenting in terms of my experience. But the one example I have was a 40-acre parcel of ag that uh, was a, they put in an application for a cluster development. Uh, and then they changed that to Ag 10. And the vesting time is significant because they, uh, they changed their application a week before the Growth Management Hearing Board determined that the Ag 10 was not uh, consistent with the GMA.
You know, Counselor, they put in their application when that was county zoning. I don't care if it was a year before, a week before, or 24 hours before. Vesting has to do with what is in effect at the time, more or less of the application, depending on how that works. There is nothing, um, nothing illicit about putting in an application a week before the law changes. Your application is, is in general judged by what was in effect when you applied.
Right, but it's what, whether or not it was, the application was complete.
Ah.
It went from a, the uh, Ag 10, which I understood, uh, to a cluster development, and then it went back to Ag 10.
Yeah, and I can't, I can't tell you whether it was or whether it wasn't.
Right.
But um, we're not going to talk about
Sure.
the validity of an application here. Clark County has, has an interesting deviation that totally legitimate from state law in that uh, pre-application procedures can um cause an application to be contingently vested.
Okay, that's interesting to know, thank you for letting, I didn't know that, so thank you. So it sounds like in addition to a building permit application vesting, a development agreement vesting, and a sub, like say a preliminary plat vesting, you also have these contingent vestings for pre-applications. Am I understanding that right?
For, for any kind of development project.
Right.
Yeah, you can have contingent vesting depending on whether the pre-application process is followed or not.
Okay, that's really good to know, thank you.
But that is nothing that the Planning Commission in general or the council in general deals with that's done at the staff level and the hearings examiner level.
I get questions, though.
Right. Well, that's, that's kind of the way it works, you know, if, if it's contingently vested or vested within the time period.
And just, just one last follow-up, do we uh, in Clark County send out a letter or is there a letter deeming completion? Is that part of the process?
Tell you that, I, yeah. I assume that there is a um, something sent out, oh, and it's not community planning either, it's community development.
Development, right, okay, sorry.
So I, I believe that the planner folks in ComDev do send out a determination of vesting or contingent vesting. Uh, well, first contingent vesting and then vesting. And if they determine that an application has not been completed in the required time, then they let the applicant know that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks everyone, um, we are running behind on time and I wanted to give you guys a little break before we move into the second half. If you do have further questions for Drew, um, do reach out to him afterwards. Maybe not tonight, but working hours, right? He has such great knowledge, he's a library of information, we're so glad and appreciative of him, appreciative of him to be able to do these short courses for us. Um, so thanks again Drew. Um, he did put his email address in the chat as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, Drew, I know you're about to um, you know, leave us for this uh, second half, thank you very much.
My pleasure, thank you everyone, you all have a great rest of your night.
Thank you. Yeah, Susan, over to you, how many uh, minutes break are you giving?
Well, we have a small group here, um, we typically give 10 minutes, but if we start to see everyone back before then, um, we can move into the second half. Depending on what you guys need to do.
No, that's fine, you said we are running a little bit behind, I don't want to uh, take your guys' time as well, I know we have this until 8:30, I wasn't thinking that we would take the entire call it three hours, but we'll see how far we've getting, so yeah, let's take the normal 10 minutes break and hopefully everyone will be back again.
Great, sounds perfect, it's uh, 7:14 right now on my clock, so we'll be back about 7:24, thanks so much.
Great, thank you.
Do we need to do another screen check at all?
Well, you know, I can't, now I'm unable to see the functions in WebEx that allow you to unmute or mute or turn off your video, they have disappeared.
Do you need to um, maybe uh, share a different monitor?
We are seeing um, we are seeing a screen that says a short course on local planning, comprehensive planning, WA Growth Management Art, GMA, that's what's on the screen with uh, Karma's logo.
Yeah, the, the slide looks great, but Catherine, you're saying that on your end, you can't see your controls.
Right. Let me do something here, so I just ended the slideshow and
Yeah, and we can see the edit version of your PowerPoint.
Okay.
So I wonder if maybe um, share screen, one of the windows needs to be moved over.
Okay, let me try that.
Because yeah, now your slide looks great, you're, yeah, from our end, that looks great.
Well, it's not that important, um, I guess, I
Well, we have a few minutes, yeah, if you feel more comfortable, we have a few minutes, if you want to try um,
Show meeting controls.
To the other monitor or something.
I just found it.
Okay.
All right, that's good, uh, Jose will be joining us and hit the record button.
Great, thanks.
Actually, I think it's still on, so we're continuing to record.
I'm sorry, we don't have any fun intermission music to play. We'll give it another minute here, get everybody back. I hope you guys got some sunshine today.
Yes, and we are expecting another, um, sunny weather or spring weather, temperature in the seventies down here.
Wow. That'll be awesome. Yeah, we had a really warm weekend in Spokane this last weekend and I was able to get my kayak out. I don't think I've, I can remember getting it out in mid-April before, so that was great.
Right, uh, they forecast in seventies in the next few days. I think we're a little bit over sixty today, something like that. And sunny.
Fabulous. Guys will have to, people will be calling in sick, I'm sure.
Uh, most of us, some of our staff are working from, they have a hybrid, they're working from home and have the option to also come into the office.
That's good. Yeah, that's what we have too. Okay, is everyone back?
Yeah, go ahead.
We'll go ahead and start then. Okay. Thank you for staying for the second half here. Um, again, please feel free to put any questions you might have in the chat and we'll get to them after Catherine's done at the end. So take it away, Catherine.
Okay, thank you so much Suzanne. Um, I am going to cover comprehensive planning basics. Uh, Drew covered, uh, some elements of comprehensive basics. Uh, I'm going to also cover similar items. One thing I do want to say, uh, starting out is that, uh, there's a lot of content here in these two next sessions. And while I am a, uh, planning practitioner, I don't have everything memorized. It, it just amazes me how people, um, memorize and, uh, give presentations. I, however, will be reading my notes. I'll try to be as engaging as possible. Uh, but I appreciate your patience with that. And also, I'm going to mention that in the interest of time, I may end up shaving a little bit here and there, um, that are a little bit redundant based on Drew's presentation. But if, uh, just like Suzanne said, all of the slides will be in your packets. Um, if you have, uh, li- or questions or comments after the workshop, uh, reach out to your planners. Obviously, they're your local subject matter experts and they are tip top. So, okay, so I'll be providing a general overview of the GMA, how it relates to planning efforts that are going on in your communities. Over the next several years, counties, cities and towns are going through the periodic update, comprehensive plan periodic update. This happens about every 10 years. And the development regulations as well and critical areas. And, um, it's, it's just a, a great time, a super duper time, to be involved in planning in your community. So exciting times. Okay, so I'll cover, um, the following as it relates to comprehensive planning within the Growth Management Act. Why do we plan? I'll go into that. What the, what is the purpose of planning? Uh, Drew obviously set the stage for that. We'll expand on that. I'll introduce you to the Growth Management Act Framework for Planning in Washington State. We'll cover what a comprehensive plan is, the elements of a comprehensive plan and so on, how you implement the plans such as adopting subsequent city-county code updates, and how you keep the plan current with changing conditions, uh, and new trends, updating the plans, annual updates and the periodic update every 10 years. So why is planning so important? Planning provides an opportunity to bring community members together to have meaningful conversations about what they want for the future. And how you can build on the strengths in your community and create places where communities, the community members can live and work and thrive. The comprehensive planning process emphasizes deliberation and community engagement. Through deliberate, through comprehensive planning, community comes together to agree on a shared vision for the future. Identify community needs, identify strategies to implement the vision and meet community needs. Agree on local spending priorities needed to implement the identified strategies. And establish implementing regulations that will help ensure that once the big picture vision and goals are established in the comprehensive plan, development is managed and reviewed consistent with those decisions. The more robust the input and participation from the community, the more legitimate the plan is to the community. And, uh, the more the community will take ownership of the plan. These can often be difficult conversations for a community to have, but they're very important because ultimately the places where we live, uh, in, uh, contribute to livability and community vitality. Once the plan and implementing regulations are adopted, another act, the Local Project Review Act, helps to ensure certainty and transparency with respect to decisions on specific development projects, as Drew Paula mentioned earlier in section one. At its heart, there are fundamental tensions that our planning framework must address. I'm sure you've heard some version of these before. First of all, people value predictability and certainty when seeking project development per- permits. Second, people value public deliberation and inclusive decision-making. The public expects fairness and transparency. In Washington, we resolved this tension in a very particular way. Washington law heavily favors a deliberative process for a council's legislative dis- This is significant because the legislative process is the main opportunity.
Susan, uh, look like Kathleen is calling in and out.
Yeah, uh, let me try and get a hold of our own teams here. Thanks for your patience with technology, right? Hopefully we can get her back here in just a minute. Let's see here. All right. Yeah, hitting her here. I think, there you are, Catherine.
Okay, my goodness. I apologize for that. Um.
Technology.
What's that?
Technology.
Well, I tell you what, I'm going to move on and, um, hopefully. Okay, so what makes a good plan, a good plan? So, couple words, um, that, uh, our agency has come up with that sums up planning is disciplined imagination. The shortest two words you can use to describe planning. At a high level, the plan should be realistic, compelling and specific. By realistic, we mean grounded in reality and achievable. By compelling, we mean that the plan must articulate a compelling sense of the community's long-term goals. And the plan must be sufficiently specific to consistently guide day-to-day decisions. These are really the hallmarks of a good plan and allow you to make persistent and consistent efforts toward a long-term goal. Okay, so how did the Growth Management Act come about? Uh, the Growth Management Act, or the GMA, as most of us call it, grew out of statewide concern about rapid growth that was occurring in the nineteen eighties. And associated losses of resource lands and natural areas sprawl and difficulty. Communities were having to fund infrastructure improvements from this type of uncoordinated development. The GMA was first adopted in nineteen ninety and is a series of statutes developed to address ways to accommodate growth. As part of the legislative findings for the act, the legislature remarked that, quote, "Uncoordinated and unplanned growth, together with a lack of common goals expressing the public's interest in the conservation and the wise use of our lands, posed a threat to the environment, sustainable economic development, and the health, safety and high quality of life enjoyed by residents of this state," unquote. With adoption, the GMA provides a statewide planning framework to adj- address these concerns and requires local planning that is guided by state law. The GMA requires that the fastest-growing cities and counties complete comprehensive plans and development regulations to guide this future growth. This also includes protecting critical areas and conserving natural resource lands. The GMA today has fifteen goals. These are non-prioritized goals that embody the legislature's intent to help guide the development and adoption of comprehensive plans and development regulations. The goals are not listed in order of priority and are not prioritized by the law. Each carries the same value and importance to our state. All should be looked at to complement and reinforce one another. Some goals use soft words like encourage, while others are more strongly worded with action and words like reduce, maintain, protect. As a note here, the housing goal was strengthened from encourage affordable housing to plan for and accommodate in twenty twenty-one, shown in blue. Jurisdictions must now plan for and accommodate housing affordable to each of the economic levels in our society, as in high to extremely low in the income segments. The last goal, ensure comprehensive plans adapt and mitigate the effects of a changing climate, is a recent addition to the GMA goals. Please note that there is flexibility in how each jurisdiction chooses to respond to the statewide goals. Washington's state, Washington State's planning approach is known as a bottom-up approach to planning, as opposed to Oregon, because each local community addresses these goals in a way that suits their local vision. How are we doing now, Suzanne? Are we, are we good to go?
Yeah, everything's great.
Okay, excellent. In Washington's framework, there are pieces that apply broadly and others that apply only to larger metropolitan areas. So there are many different components of the GMA in terms of applicability and even greater variation in practice. Only the state's fastest-growing counties and cities are required to fully plan under the GMA, including those areas shown in blue and green. Counties and cities fully planning under the GMA, such as Clark County, are required to meet all of the act's goals and requirements. This means that they must agree on county-wide planning policies and develop detailed comprehensive plans. For the Central Puget Sound area, shown in darker blue, there's also a regional planning framework called Vision Twenty-Five, which is a long-range growth management, environmental, economic and transportation strategy for Kitsap County, King County, Pierce County and Snohomish County. For both groups in blue, blue counties, there's also a requirement for what is termed Buildable Lands Review. And I know you've heard, you're familiar with this most likely for, for those of you that have been commissioners for a period of time now. Um, there's also a requirement for what is termed Buildable Lands Review, which is a review and reporting mechanism to confirm land use goals are being met under the GMA, or if not, to make adjustments to those policies and goals. The smallest and slowest-growing counties shown in orange are referred to partially-planning communities and need to plan for resource lands and critical areas specifically. So as mentioned, GMA was intended to ensure our communities were appropriately planning for growth. So let's look at some trends, uh, lately, actually. Actually, this is a slide of, uh, data. According to the Office of Financial Management, the twenty twenty-three population trends report, trend report indicates Washington's population estimate as of April twenty twenty-three is close to eight million population. Migration continues to be the primary driver behind population growth. Washington State's population grew by over two million people over a twenty-year time period from about five point eight million to in twenty, uh, in two thousand to seven point seven million by twenty twenty, or by over thirty-two percent. If population increased, increase was averaged out over the twenty-year time period, that would be the equivalent to adding about the population of the City of Federal Way every year. With the state's natural beauty, recreation opportunities, countrywide migration trends, our state will continue to grow. The state is expected to exceed nine million by twenty forty. Estimates are that we will need one point one million new homes in the next twenty years, which is prompting a renewed effort to plan for new housing and plan for housing that will meet the needs of all economic segments of our growing communities. And we need to plan for this growth in a way that considers how to maintain those desirable attributes while accommodating this population growth. To do this, GMA relies upon coordination, both within a jurisdiction and between a jurisdiction and its neighbors. Let's talk about how a region comes together to coordinate their planning efforts. County-wide planning policies are developed by county and all the, and all the cities within the county. And are policies that help to ensure that plans within a county are consistent with one another and work together to manage regional growth. They provide regional, a regional framework to plan for growth, designate and plan for urban growth areas and expansions to designated urban growth areas, plan for county-wide facilities such as highways and airports, consider affordable housing needs, and plan for other locally important regional issues such as county-wide economic development. One of the tasks of the county-wide planning policies is allocating population growth amongst the cities and unincorporated areas within the county. This is done to guide how and where the region grows. Allocating, allocating population starts with the county getting a population growth projection from the Office of Financial Management. The county-wide process allocates population growth to cities and to unincorporated urban and rural areas. In the Puget Sound region, the Puget Sound Regional Council has provided guidance on regional geographies, allocating larger population to cities and centers. Outside of this region, this exercise may be based on space, water supply, sewer, or other facilities that conserve growth such as transit, transit centers. The city decides how to plan for the allocated growth. Fully planning counties must work with the cities to designate existing and future urban growth areas. This is a collaborative process between the county and cities based on population allocation that we just discussed from the Office of Financial Management, analysis of buildable land available and opportunities for contiguous and orderly development, calculation of sufficient land for twenty years of growth based on zoning and considering market factors, and the ability of the local government to provide adequate public facilities to serve development. The county is responsible for final decisions on UGAs, urban growth areas. This map shows urban growth areas within the state. These are, these areas will contain most of the new growth in the state and are generally characterized by greater density of jobs and housing. Rural areas maintain rural character and are generally characterized by rural service levels and agriculture and resource lands. So how do we know if our plans are working to accommodate the growth that was allocated to the community? This is where the Buildable, Buildable Lands Program steps in. Seven counties shown on the map are subject to the Buildable Lands Program. It requires that jurisdictions measure growth and compare actual development to planned densities within specific periods of time. The Buildable Lands Program is twofold. The first is to look back and determine whether a county and its cities are achieving urban densities within urban growth areas as they were planned. The second looks forward by asking, is there sufficient capacity for residential and employment growth for the next twenty years? If there is not, then the city will identify reasonable measures um, other than adjusting their urban growth area boundaries to correct inconsistencies between actual and planned growth. Now that we've looked at some of the tools used in comprehensive planning, we'll dive a little deeper into what the comprehensive plan should contain. Comprehensive plans are the centerpiece of local planning efforts. A comprehensive plan articulates a series of goals, objectives, policies, actions, and standards that are intended to guide the day-to-day decisions of elected officials and local government staff. Each comprehensive plan consists of individual elements, also known as chapters. As we discussed earlier, the GMA specifies mandatory elements for all comprehensive plans. So you'll see that the contents of a plan generally follow the goals that were discussed earlier. The plan may also contain additional chapters to address local issues of importance. The GMA also contains specific analytical and policy requirements for each of the required elements. If you recall, in the beginning of this presentation, we talked about what it is that makes a good plan. You can see the themes of realistic, compelling, and specific woven throughout the GMA requirements. GMA requires plans to contain goals and policies to detail what the public and elected decision-makers want to achieve forming their compelling vision. Each element contains relative, relevant local facts and analyses. This is necessary documentation about realistic constraints and opportunities facing a community and the factual basis people need to develop a plan that is practical. Each element contains a strategy or a set of actions that align facts with the community's vision as it's carried throughout their planning goals and policies. A plan's action items guide the decisions that you need to implement in order to realize a community vision embodied by the plan. Okay, the required elements of a comprehensive plan. As I mentioned, the GMA provides special direction, specific direction on elements and the contents of those elements that must be included in the comprehensive plan. Land use, housing, capital facilities, utilities, rural for counties only, transportation and climate resiliencies, resiliency, these are all required elements in your comprehensive plan. The land use element provides the layout for communities' future growth. And um, the housing, capital facilities, utilities, and transportation elements all must include an inventory of what is existing, identify what is needed now, and what is needed to accommodate future growth. Jurisdictions may also include other optional elements in the plan to meet unique local needs or preferences, such as historic preservation or a parks and recreation plan, economic development, or urban design element. And um, I want to touch on a couple of specific topic areas. First of all, I want to discuss natural resources and critical areas. Since protection of these lands was a key consideration in implementing the GMA back in the nineteen nineties and even before that, of course. Natural resource lands of long-term commercial significance are designated and conserved based on specific criteria that looks at parcel size, soil, and proximity to markets. These are in areas that are not already characterized by urban growth. Natural resource lands include agricultural resource lands, forest resource lands, and mineral resource lands. All counties and cities were required to designate and protect environmentally critical areas and to protect the important functions and values that are provided by critical areas. Critical areas include important habitat areas as well as hazardous areas. The five specific areas that are addressed in the GMA in the critical areas include frequently flooded areas, geologically hazardous areas, critical aquifer recharge areas, fish and wildlife habitat, habitat conservation areas, and wetlands. Local governments planning for critical areas must be informed by best available science. Counties and cities may use information that local, state, and federal natural resource agencies have determined represents the best available science. Or scientific information may be produced through a valid scientific process. This is spelled out in the WAC three sixty-five dash one ninety-five dash nine hundred, the Washington Administrative Code. And that, that section um, provides guidelines related to best available science, excuse me. That's based on best available science, local jurisdictions are required to adopt regulations that will protect functions and values of the five critical areas. These can come in the form of buffers, mitigation requirements, and other standards that will protect important and often irreplaceable biological services or protect health and safety. Next, I want to highlight housing. House Bill twelve twenty was signed into law in twenty twenty-one and significantly strengthened the GMA housing goal. Instead of the softer encourage affordable housing, as I mentioned earlier, communities are now required to, required to plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments. Communities are now directed to take more actions to achieve their housing needs more than ever before. The local, and this is because, of course, as you know, we're, uh, Washington State is experiencing a housing crisis, and so recent legislation has been geared at um, improving housing productivity and housing affordability. The local housing elements must include the five listed requirements, including an inventory and analysis of housing needs and assessment of the capacity to provide for the housing needs. Inclusion of policies to support middle housing, adequate provisions for all housing needs, addressing racially disparate impacts and displacement risks. All very new in recent, recent legislation. This graphic developed by the Commerce Housing Team provides a good overview of the housing element update process and where you will find guidance and tools to help you complete each step, excuse me. You see that on the left, um, the housing element uses what the Department of Commerce has come up with in terms of projected housing needs to allocate to each jurisdiction. The housing element must show sufficient land capacity for each income level and housing type. The housing element must identify barriers to housing needed and document programs and actions needed to achieve housing availability. The element must review, identify, and address racially disparate impacts, displacement, and exclusion and areas at high risk of displacement. And lastly, update the policies and the regulations. Finally, I want to highlight recently added climate planning requirements. In twenty twenty-three, the GMA was amended to add a new goal related to climate planning. To establish the administrative rules for climate planning, Commerce will be updating the Washington Administrative Code. Our rulemaking is expected to provide guidance that cities and counties can use when developing comprehensive plan updates and describe new regulatory authority by which Commerce will review and approve city and county climate elements. We have information on our climate webpage about this rulemaking process. There is actually, our climate webpage is, is extensive, very extensive. I think if you um, happen to navigate to it and uh, read through it, you'll find some very helpful information for addressing the climate element. In January twenty twenty-four, Commerce published intermediate climate element planning guidance and a list of more than two hundred model climate goals and policies that counties and cities and jurisdictions can use, a menu of measures. Um, a climate element can take the form of a single comprehensive plan chapter, a climate element, standalone element, or be integrated into several chapters and elements such as integrated into the housing element, the transportation element, or the land use element. Applicable cities and counties with a twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan periodic update deadline, such as Clark County, will be the first cities required to have a climate element and should use the intermediate guidance. And I understand um, Clark County is well underway with a climate element and has done quite a bit of work towards that end. All fully planning jurisdictions must prepare a resiliency sub-element. Eleven of the state's largest and fastest-growing um, counties and their cities with a population greater than six thousand must adopt the climate element with both a greenhouse gas emissions reduction sub-element and a resilience sub-element. The comprehensive plan must be both externally and internally consistent. By internal consistency, we mean all elements must be based on the same future land use plan map and population projections. Is the plan based on the same set of assumptions? Do the plan elements all tell the same story? Can adequate public facilities be provided with planned development currency? By external consistency, we mean that the plan must be consistent with the county-wide planning policies and should be coordinated with plans of adjacent cities and counties. Finally, each jurisdiction's development regulations, planning activities, and capital budget decisions must be consistent with and implement the comprehensive plan. So adopting the comprehensive plan. And um, you'll be uh, addressing this in a short order. Once you have completed your comprehensive plan update, each jurisdiction's code will have a specific process for amending and adopting the comprehensive plan. Prior to adoption, sixty-day notice must be provided to the state. Commerce and other agencies do not approve plans, and plans are valid, considered valid upon adoption. However, Commerce, Commerce or other state agencies may point out, out areas of inconsistency or risk. Additionally, the transportation element is certified by regional transportation organizations to ensure consistency with the regional transportation plan. Comprehensive plans can be amended only once a year and must be updated every ten years. It is appealable within sixty days to a regional growth management hearings board by anyone who has standing or has commented at any point during the adoption process. The GMA requires local government actions to not simply be consistent with the plan, but also to implement the plan. The main ways to implement your plan are through development regulations and spending priorities. Each jurisdiction has the flexibility to choose how to develop their comprehensive plan and how to develop implementing regulations and capital improvement plans in a way that fits the local vision and values of your communities. Your development regulations, such as zoning permitting processes and critical areas, all must be consistent with your vision, with the comprehensive plan. The capital facilities element includes an inventory of capital infrastructure and evaluates its current needs and future needs to accommodate projected growth. The plan includes estimated costs of providing those facilities over the lifespan, um, over the life of the plan with detailed financing information for the next six years. Capital improvement plans set priorities for infrastructure improvements and investments in roads, parks, water and sewer service, and other community facility needs. If projected revenues can't pay for needed facilities over the course of the life of the plan, the land use element must be reassessed. The transportation element includes a similar inventory, excuse me, of a jurisdiction's transportation system and identifies future projects as well as levels of services, levels of service, establishes levels of service consistent with regional and state transportation plans. Concurrent programs are established in development regulations to ensure that new development would not decrease a road segment or and/or an intersection below the established levels of service in the, in the comprehensive plan. Concurrent is required for transportation within six years from the time of development. If during project review, it's determined that a development would decrease the levels of service, the jurisdiction would need to either deny the development project proposal, require improvements to maintain the levels of service, or the level of service shall be reassessed in the comprehensive plan. The first major tool you have to implement your plan is your development regulations. Sometimes it's known as a unified development code, sometimes it's referred to as the zoning code. It all translates to your development regulations, those regulations surrounding a project permit, project application. Development regulations are the specific controls placed on development or land use activities by a county or a city, and again, development regulations must be consistent with and implement the comprehensive plans. These regulations are adopted into the jurisdiction's code and are the rules that inform the what- These regulations are adopted into the jurisdiction's code and are the rules that inform the what, where and how. Development may occur and the process in which the applications will be reviewed. Regulations provide predictability for developers and community members. Development regulations also establish concurrency programs. Which ensure public facilities such as road, water, sewer are provided with the developments they will serve. Drew mentioned R C W thirty-six seventy B, which is the Local Project Review Act. Most of the rules for development regulations can be also found in the Local Project Review Act. Traditional zoning considers maximum densities and minimum lot sizes for efficient land use. Form-based codes focus on detailed designs. Building mass and scale and buildings in proximity on each individual lot. Critical areas regulations set buffers and restrictions in critical areas. Subdivision regulations set out the process as Drew mentioned earlier for dividing land. And ensuring that adequate provisions, the sewer, the water, the utilities. And other requirements for development. Public works standards set out street widths, for example, and other standards related to public facilities. Other regulations such as design standards, sign codes, landscaping, parking. Regulate appearance, health and safety within the community, also known as development regulations. As we mentioned, every ten years jurisdictions must review and update their comprehensive plan and development regulations. This is such a good opportunity every ten years for a jurisdiction to. Take an overview of. Of their community, look at what's working, what's not worked, what needs to be changed. Respond to new conditions and new requirements. The first step will be a detailed review of your existing plan and regulations. Few counties and cities. Let's put it this way, most if not all counties and cities. Will have to make at least some revisions to their plans and regulations based on recent legislation and population growth. This is because ensuring consistency requires a consideration of updated population projections. Amendments to GMA statutes, growth management hearings board cases. And court interpretations of Growth Management Act regulations and changes in the community. Jurisdictions failing to complete the update are ineligible for listed grant and loan programs. And I've listed those on the right-hand side there. Those are grants and loan programs. Additionally, other state agencies such as Ecology, Department of Transportation. Department of Fish and Wildlife, Department of Health and so on. Require consistency with the GMA prior to awarding grants and loans themselves. So they will check in with the Department of Commerce to see the jurisdiction's completion of the. Previous periodic update and to make sure that before they grant loans. That the jurisdiction is in compliance with the Growth Management Act. All right, the legislature has made many amendments to the Growth Management Act, particularly in the last five years. I'm sure you're keenly aware of that. Including those listed on this slide. Keep in mind, each bill amends different sections of the Growth Management Act. Applicability for each amendment varies by community size and other criteria. Oops. All right. Can you see me Suzanne? It looks like I.
Yeah, it looks like maybe you escaped out of the full presentation. We just see your edit.
Okay. Let's do this. Try to get back in there. Okay.
There we go. Looks good.
That's great. My goodness. Thank you all for your patience. Now let me get back through. I wonder which, let's see here. Maybe going through all these. I apologize for this distraction. Gone through quite a bit. Mandatory adopting, implementing capital facilities, development regulations. Periodic review. Okay, here we go. So House Bill twelve twenty was enacted in two thousand and twenty-one and pertains to affordable housing. The legislature instructs local governments to plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all income levels. House Bill thirteen thirty-seven, you may be familiar with this one also. Middle housing and accessory dwelling units. The legislature promotes greater variety of housing types that are compatible with single-family homes in scale and form and character. House Bill seventeen seventeen pertains to tribal participation and collaboration. The legislature established practices to foster greater opportunities for government-to-government coordination and planning. And House Bill eleven eighty-one adopted in two thousand and twenty-three is the climate change and resiliency laws. The legislature adopted a climate change planning goal. A new element to reduce greenhouse gases and build community resilience to disaster events. Right, I believe this is the last slide of this section. Some final thoughts, suggestions for land use. Your community has broad discretion in planning your community's form and its future. So how does that happen? It can happen when people invest time to work together to ask the questions such as what is good here in our community? What is missing in our community? What could be better? And how do we want to provide for the growth that is likely to come? In urban areas, it may look like. It may look at how we can better support housing near jobs. Housing, provide accessible transportation for people of all ages and abilities. And provide housing that supports all income levels. In rural areas, it may look like how we support Washington's resource lands for agriculture and forestry. Protect rural character and provide appropriate levels of service. In summary, while the GMA provides the framework, local governments decide how that translates into a desired future. Okay, I will stop sharing. At this time and bring up my next section of the presentation. One second here. Okay, now I need to share my screen. All right. All right, sounds good. So next we'll talk about the roles in planning. And effective public process. Suzanne, how are we doing on time?
Oh, well, we have about twenty minutes left if. You guys have the room until eight thirty.
Okay, well, I've got quite a few slides here. I may just go through them fairly swiftly. In this portion of the presentation, we will identify the players in the long range and current planning process. And we'll define their roles and why each is important with respect to the. Planning documents, the development standards, the codes and laws. And how they work together in the planning process. I know most of you in this room know this. There are multiple players. Planning is complicated. Many steps that often loop back together. There are large time gaps and the rules are always changing. Why are the rules always changing? The rules are changing because the characteristics of our communities are changing. As you recall, the population increase, migration increase. And new laws, of course, are added on and must be addressed. And as Drew mentioned. The only constant really is change in the land use planning process. I know you probably know that by now. Let's see. Okay, so the players. In the planning process include the decision makers. But these depend on the type of decision and the individual jurisdiction's code. We've got the elected officials, the planning commission. Generally, the planning commission is advisory to the council and makes recommendations regarding new or amended codes. Plans, design standards and various land use decisions. The council approves the comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan amendments. Development regulation, updates and amendments. Utilities and capital facilities plans, design standards, development standards, code amendments. And major land use actions. In many places, a hearing examiner either decides most complicated land uses decisions or provides legal recommendation to council. Staff provide recommendations to everyone and have limited administrative capacity to make decisions. Interested bodies include other agencies, tribes, outside utilities. Various districts like water and fire and others such as trail advocacy groups or the like. Current versus long-range planning. Current planning is also known as development review. It's the process of bringing development or subdivisions. Into projects into life from concept through certificates of occupancy. Long-range planning legislative defines the city's vision and standards. Comprehensive plan is a long-range planning document. Development standards and codes are long-range planning documents. Design standards typically also can be both current planning and long-range planning. So land use decisions consist of legislative decisions as we've mentioned earlier. Quasi judicial current planning type of decisions and administrative current planning type of decisions that are conducted by staff. Elected officials adopting policies, council makes the rules, hearing body applies, the hearing body, the hearing examiner. Applies the rules and staff interprets and applies the rules. Typical steps in rulemaking in the legislative process. Can be an amendment to a plan or a regulation proposed, reviewed by, it's reviewed by staff or consultants. It consists of a CIPA State Environmental Protection Act. Review and checklist that Drew mentioned earlier. Planning Commission hearing and recommendation, council review and decision. And the decision can be appealed again by anyone who has taken part in the process. Through the Growth Management Hearings Board by any party of record. Typical steps in quasi judicial decision making, acting as a judge. Similar project application comes in, a determination of completeness is made in the application itself. Staff review or consultants review. Again, there's a state CIPA. Determination, determination of non-significance mitigated or environmental impact. Analysis, there is public notice is required at each stage except for the staff report. And this is also appealable to superior court by parties of record. Typical steps in the administrative process, staff interprets. This is when staff interprets and applies. Discretion to the project application. They make a determination of completeness of the application materials. Again, reviewed by staff or consultants, again, CIPA environmental review, staff decision. And it is also appealable to superior court. And there's no public notice required. These are types of current planning decisions, administrative staff. These include building and sign permits, boundary lines, adjustments, then we have. Quasi judicial review, planning commission. Board of County Counselors, city council and or hearing examiner. These include conditional use permits. Subdivisions, variances, large subdivisions. And then the legislative, again, city council makes these decisions in terms of. These include comprehensive plans, development codes, zoning text and so on. So now roles in the development process. So. Let's see here. The development process in a nutshell, it begins oftentimes, but not always with a pre-application meeting. Then an application for a development proposal is submitted. Again, staff review the application packet for completeness. Completeness, determination of completeness. Happens when the application forms contain everything that is needed. And demonstrates what a complete application consists of. This is also found in the codes and. The completeness, the application, the codes and the forms. All sync together and reflect what a complete application consists of. Then there's a notice of application, then the project review, an open record hearing if that is required and then the decision is made. So the city council are the ultimate decision makers, the planning commission and the board of adjustments are appointed advisory to the council. They make recommendations to council and make limited decisions. And then staff act as advisors to both the council and the commission. And are the in-house experts, subject matter experts. Planning staff, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on these slides. There are many of them. But these slides explain the role of your staff and staff again can be. Everyone from the director of the Community Planning and Development Department, also your public works department, your building official, your engineering. These may, individuals may or may not be considered staff depending on the circumstances and depending on the project. Okay. I don't think I'll go back over these. Staff conducts the pre-app meetings. This is a little redundant on binding. Creates the staff report, represents the project at hearings and shepherds the project through permitting, through to permitting. Planning staff also keep not only the applicant informed, but the public informed, the planning commission informed. Help staff from other departments understand the process, coordinates with outside agencies, teaches. The general public about the process and the opportunities of when they may comment on a project proposal. Remember that public participation is essential in the Growth Management Act. And then staff keep the council and planning commission obviously informed about the projects and answer any questions or comments. Um, staff understand the, um, rules and regulations, are keeping track of the new laws. Um, are your subject matter experts, um, and can consist of quite a few, um, wear quite a few hats. Okay. Planners make sure that everyone has a seat at the table, is heard, is engaged, is, uh, provided accessible, uh, facilities, uh, serves all the stakeholders. Your planning staff serve all the cit- the stakeholders, the public, the development community, they wear so many hats, um, the elected officials, uh, the environment, all demographics. Okay, we also have staff that, um, write codes, write the short-term rental ordinances and, uh, regulations, write the sign code and, uh, the ordinance and the regulations. Um, planners are often trained, uh, in, um, environmental planning, historic preservation, transportation planning. Uh, it is a multi-disciplinary, uh, field and most planners have, uh, a deep uh, breadth of planning experience. Okay, and then planning stu- staff also write or oversee the development of the comprehensive plan, the community's long-term vision. Um, then they help the community realize that vision through all their other roles. Hey. One thing about planning staff is that, um, they enforce the code as written. Codes aren't suggestions, a must or a shall is a, is a rule that must be followed, a should, could, may, or other language is flexible. If you don't like the outcomes you're getting, change the code. Don't change the staff. Sometimes that means staff is also out doing code enforcement to keep the, the city safe, attractive and clean. In some jurisdictions, these, the planning staff is the clerk or the mayor, uh, very small jurisdictions in, within Clark County as a matter of fact. So, uh, the elected officials are the policymakers, key leaders and decision makers. They make the final decisions on some quasi-judicial permit applications. They make final decisions on the budget, communicate vision to the, the city's vision, the comprehensive plan to residents, the commissions and staff, and, uh, balance the competing needs of the city. It's quite a job. Planning commission, policy advisors created under the premise that community residents can be best, uh, objectively review, um, and recommend solid regulations. Uh, planning commissions are generally appointed bodies. I think, uh, you're most familiar with this, I think I'll quickly move on. Public participation is essential under the law, as you've heard. Um, each county and city that is required or chooses to plan shall establish and broadly disseminate to the public a public participation program identifying the procedures, providing for early and continuous public participation in the development and amendment of the comprehensive plan, land use plans and development regulations implementing such plans. The hearing examiner. The decision to have a hearing examiner is a local option. When a community does have a hearing examiner, this higher professional replaces the board of adjustments, uh, of adjustment. The hearing examiner takes the place of the planning commission in hearing applications for land use permit applications such as variances and conditional use permits. Having a hearing examiner frees up the planning commission to deal with policy issues and long-term com- concerns of the community. Okay, obligations and suggestions for effective meetings and working relationships. What I, I think I'll do here is I think I'll stop here because this is, um, very similar to what Drew presented in his Open Public Meetings Act and, uh, Public Records Act information. So I think this is actually a good time to, um, come to, uh, completion of the comprehensive planning basics and rules and responsibilities.
Great, thanks Catherine, yeah, that's sharing. That is a lot, yes. Just a reminder too, that all these slides, um, are available to you as well to pick through, um, reach out to us with questions on it. We know we've kept you a long time tonight. Um, real quick, it looks like there's a couple of questions in chat. First one from Jack, through what lens are we to weight all the competing elements? All those fifteen elements.
Through what lens? That's a good question and my, and my first response would be that it really depends on the project proposal. Um, all of the goals, if you're speaking of goals, all of them matter, all of them matter all of the time. However, you will, in certain circumstances, depending on what is in front of you, maybe it's an update to, um, let's just say it's an update to, uh, the sign code. An amendment to the sign code, or actually, let me think of something else. For example, it's, um, the update of the housing element. So obviously, certain aspects, certain goals will pertain more towards that element. And in fact, when the staff, when staff review that, present that material to you for your consideration and recommendations in those staff reports, they'll take care of that work for you. They'll identify those goals and policies that, um, that particular amendment or update pertains to. Does that help?
Yeah, I guess, um, the thing it's, I'm sitting here waiting, you know, looking at the, take two disparate things, I guess, like, uh, the housing element and the housing affordability element. Right? Where one solution to, um, and I'll use extreme examples, right? Um, um, to reduce housing cost would be to massively open up all the land and all of the farmland, which is the flattest, most developable land, right? So you're trying to get lot prices down from two hundred fifty thousand dollars a lot down to fifty thousand dollars a lot. So, but in order to do that, we would, it would damage all of our other goals of preserving farmland and, you know, rural nature and things like that. So I guess, uh, um, and then you have, you know, protecting, you know, mineral, you know, or using the mineral, um, um, lands, right? But oftentimes, a lot of our mineral lands are next to watersheds and rivers because they're gravels and stuff and from ancient floods and things like that. So how is it? What, through what lens are we balancing all of that? Because all of them are great goals. I mean, we absolutely want to preserve our farmlands and we absolutely want to preserve our, you know, I'm, you know, want to see my salmon return and to see rivers run black and, you know, with fish and, um, but how, I guess, is there a weighted mechanism? Are it, does it, or is it just all the goals are great? But then we have to just kind of arbitrarily put weights to how important a farmland is versus a subdivision? Um, or like, how do, how do, how are we as like commissioners supposed to like, look through these elements and, um, go with, which is more important? I mean, you know, some environmental stuff I could see is maybe weighted heavier. But what about creating homes for, for people to live in, so they're not in tents? So, yeah.
Each of those, you know, I think, and Jose or Oliver, please jump in if you'd like to, uh, if you have some comments yourselves. But each of these elements have to be addressed in your comprehensive plan. And, um, each of those elements will go through an extensive amount of scrutiny and review. Um, and then, so each project that comes in through the community and development department, most of that won't rise to the level, uh, most of that may be handled by staff administratively. But yours is a really good question, um. I think that, uh, it really depends on the situation, uh, which goals will apply. But bear in mind that again, there is no priority in the goals, there's no weight.
There's no, there's no weighted order, it's
There is no weighted order, that's exactly right. So, um, some goals will not pertain to the issue or the subject at hand. And, um, your staff will take you through that process and will, you're going to say something?
Yeah, well, I appreciate, yeah, I mean, keep, you, you, you referred to staff several times, but, but the staff still has to look through the same lens. And, and then technically as commissioners, we're, you know, we're, we're kind of part of staff in that we're a recommendation body, right? Just like, and, and so I guess the, um, without any kind of actual state mandated weight or Department of Commerce mandated weight, um, it really becomes an advocacy issue. Oftentimes is from a, from a, uh, from a public input process of like, who's making currently the best case for their particular position? Is it the development community? Is it the environmental community? Is it the house, you know? And, um, and depending on which
Laid out, I, I hate to interrupt here, Jack, but
Anyways.
That will be laid out in your comprehensive plan. Um, so the policies and the goals that are in your comprehensive plan will spell out the priorities. That's where your priorities will, will come from, um, is the comprehensive plan. And then those development regulations and the amendments, those must implement those policies and goals.
Okay, thanks.
That's a good question.
Yes, I, I, uh, this is Oliver. I think, uh, Kathleen, you answered it well because, um, the, it is the plan or some communities refer to it as the general plan. It is the plan that dictates by setting policies and goals and strategies. As you indicated, there is no order, uh, or weighted order of the, uh, goals in the GMA. For example, protection of property rights. Property owners have the right to develop their property. But then the goal in the comprehensive plan, whether it's in the land use or the rural element, says the perimeters on how those areas need to develop. Similarly, your developing regulation then sets some other additional protection or at least clear understanding of how those areas would develop, whether it's in setback, whether it's in height and so forth, and how close you may come to, for example, if your property has environmental constraints on it, what would be the buffer? How close can you, could you, could you do any activity that uh, impede that, uh, function of that critical area? So those are somehow you balance, you know, some of the goals, um, that is in the complaint. Every project is different and we talk about, you know, gradual, um, designation in our process. In other words, we do identify what areas should be planned for residential and what areas should be planned for commercial and so forth. So when you're doing that, you are in a sense trying to create a balance where there are no, um, impact and where there is impact, you come up on how to mitigate that. So it is a balancing act, like you clearly stated. The goals are not, uh, in any order, uh, protecting the environment, allowing development to occur. Uh, they're all interwoven and, but the policy in the complaint, particularly in the land use releases the goal, both in the rural area and also in the urban area or how communities are supposed to be developing. And over time, I mean, we have experienced the passage of the Growth Management Act since nineteen ninety and we are still, uh, finding ways to create balance. And when, when there are issues where some folks, uh, determines that maybe the action of the council or whatever, uh, doesn't comply with the, the growth management art or conflict, their action conflicts or it will not be compliance with the growth management, and that's when you get an appeal. So then in that case, either the growth board or the court renders a decision telling you whether you, your action is in compliance or not. So those are the, some of the areas that balance are, um, are provided.
So can I jump in for a second?
Yes, Chris.
Okay, thanks. So, um, I think Catherine, you, you were talking more from the point of view, I think of, of projects and you said, well, the co- the, the goals in the plan will, um, will be your, your framework. But what I think Commissioner Haroon is a planning commissioner. He doesn't do, on the planning commission, he doesn't look at projects. They don't do projects in Clark County because we have this hearings examiner who does, the hearings examiner and staff do all the quasi-judicial stuff. So there, uh, the planning commission is doing legislation. And y- yes, the, eh, theoretically, the goals are not listed in any, in order of priority um, according, eh, and they're in RCW thirty-six seventy-eight oh-two-oh in case anybody wants to read them. But if you look at the wording of the goals, okay? One of them says encourage this. Another one says do that. Now, which one do you think has more weight? Uh, from the point of view of the Growth Management Hearings Board, I will tell you it is the one that says do that. And as Catherine discussed with you, when the housing, uh, bill was passed this year, one of the housing bills, they changed the wording from plan, uh, what was it? Encourage the development of affordable housing to plan for and accommodate. So that's a more directive sort of wording there. And I, I think that would probably be given as some pretty serious thought by the growth board if somebody were to allege that the county had not planned for or accommodated housing. Now, nonetheless, there is still balancing, as Oliver talked about, and, and that's, that's what you all do. So housing has plan for and accommodate. Natural resources has maintain and enhance. Um, and, and there you have one of your issues that you asked about commissioner. So, you know, obviously, the cheapest thing would be to put a bunch of houses on a farm where there, you know, there are any trees and it's flat and but I, I don't think that planning to do that is going to be necessarily a winner at the growth board because we have this other goal. So it's, it's a balancing act. Thank you. Thanks for that, uh, next question, looks like it's the only one. Oh, Sue withdrew it. Uh, no more questions, I'll give a minute here. Does anyone else have anything they want to ask? We appreciate you staying late. We know it's a lot of information to take in and digest. So again, feel free to look through those slide decks, um, reach out to us with any questions. So again, feel free to look through those slide decks, reach out to us with any questions. Hopefully you all also saw Drew put his email address up in chat as well. If no one has anything else, we can all go, uh, go get ready for bed, right?
Yes, and Susan, yes, Susan, give me just a minute to thank both you and Drew and Kathleen. Thank you. You're always responsive when I call. So thank you greatly appreciated. I will also say that this session is also recorded. So some of our planning commission members that could not be here tonight can also you know, listen to it. I do encourage them, particularly new members and existing members to do, take the course on short course on local planning. Like I said earlier, I do participate and have, you know, giving presentation on one of these, like I said in 2018, the state did recognize my participation. So thank you, Kathleen, and thank you, Susan. Greatly appreciated. And the counselors that were able to join us and the county manager and our own legal counsel. Thank you all for the opportunity. You ran a little bit late, but it's worth it. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you also, Oliver. It's always a pleasure to be in Clark County and the environments. It truly is.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks.
Goodbye.